Long City Council meeting will now be called to Artim. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Call, Mrs. Kadim?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
LaVie Lebo?
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Yes.
Bellatier?
Yeah.
Carrera?
Here.
Present.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Madam Clerk, I'm going to entertain citizens' input first before we advise what the FY 2022 municipal budget presentation will look like. In addition to that, I also like to make a statement as well. So, Madam Clerk, citizens' input, please.
Sure. The first citizens' input we have is actually from last Monday. It was sent to the incorrect email address, and I assured that the individual that it would be read this evening. Dear Council President Ponti, Vice President LaLiberty, and members of the council, I'm writing today about the last meeting. So Seat Number Six wants to play the blame game and the political game about a meeting that he scheduled at Corky Row and how the mayor scheduled it the same day. Well, I don't buy it. The only blame game I'm blaming is the Committee on Public Safety. I'm sure the Chair knows Corky Row has had issues for a while. Now again, Fall River does it, and we wait till something happens, and we waited for a kid to die. Where's the plan that Council Number One continues to say I don't know how many times, but yet he continues to be ignored? So let's see how much the Public Safety Committee put in the work, because we all know shootings and stabbings are nothing new. So let's see. Excuse me. So we had three meetings, which is a shame. Two in 2020 during the pandemic, one in 2021, which was back in March. After asking the clerk for those agendas and looking at them, zero on public safety. We had one. It was on racist, and of course, it started during the Black Lives Matter. So I ask, when is the next public safety meeting, Mr. Chair? You can blame the mayor all you want, which, for the record, I'm not a fan of him at all, but you have yet to call for another meeting. I think this committee is not serious. If you want this to be serious, the chief needs to be at every meeting with updates, and why are the neighborhood presidents not invited to these meetings? If anything, these people are underused, and they need to be a source, not to be ignored. So I'm asking, because of the problems, this committee should meet twice a month and have updates to the council. This is a meeting to vent for all of us. So when Council in Seat Eight asks why the meeting is running late, it's not on the council president, it's because the venting is in the wrong committee. It should have hit the Committee on Finance with a recommendation by the Public Safety, but that didn't happen because we haven't had a meeting for 12 months. Let's stop playing the blame game and do what you're elected to do. Thank you, David Olivera.
Councilor in Seat Six, Councilor Peckham.
Just for clarification, that entire letter's false. I had a meeting scheduled for this month on the 15th. Actually, I had the one scheduled the night that the mayor had his. Had one for the 15th of this month, canceled due to budget. Tried to reschedule for the 23rd, I think it was. I may be mistaken. But I got a phone call today that the 29th is now also not available, another night that I had scheduled for a public safety meeting. So I think I may have had three or four. Mr. Olivera is completely correct, but I probably, in an area of maybe 12 or 13, have been canceled on me. Or we've tried to set a date with the other two councils on the committee, and the date wasn't available. Outside of that, don't know what to tell you. I can only go by what's available and what's open. If I try to grab a date for a public safety meeting, it's approved, and then budget discussions come up, budget discussions take precedent. So we are working to get another public safety date coming up in the near future, and when that comes up, hopefully, I'll be able to have it, and it'll be put out to the public with that I yield. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Council President and members of the City Council, I realize that you are busy with the budget process, but I believe that this is an important issue. On June 4th, the mayor made his announcement with photos that he was repairing Stafford Road. The asphalt was not even down five days, and it had been marked up for digging. Why would anyone cut into a freshly asphalted street? Where's the approval required from the council? I would think that if the city had planned to repair Stafford Road, especially from all the work that had been done over the last year, someone would have notified all utilities. Currently, there are several metal trench plates up and down Stafford Road on newly asphalted streets. The mayor obviously had his head up his backside to promote the repair of the street to have it three days later dug up. This is where our tax dollars are going. Everyone knows you will approve the budget with a huge floor show, but remember items like this when you vote to approve such items and requests for street cuts. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry.
Councilor in Seat Four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. To the clerk through you, Mr. President, I went down Stafford Road today after I wrote that letter, and there are marks on the road, but I'm not sure if it's because they're going to be cutting up, which I hope is not the case, or if it's for, you know, the next contractor that's coming in to work on top of it, saying where the utilities are underneath. But could you please send a letter? We don't have a city engineer, so I'm not sure even who that would go to, but could you please find out what those markings are? Thank you.
Councilor in Seat Eight, Councilor Pereira.
Sure, I'll tell you what they are, because I got a call a couple of days ago from somebody about that very issue. What's happened is the coat that's down there is a binder coat, and when the water department comes before, as I'm sure Mr. Frillen can explain to you why that had to be cut and why they had to wait to cut it as the binder coat, but it's because of rusty water pipes that they have to do. So when he comes down, then I think he can give us an explanation for that. But that's why, and it is not the final coat. I'd like to see that street be paved all the way to the Tiverton Line as well, because it's really bumpy there, and they stopped right at the bridge. But that's what it's for, water pipes. So perhaps he can clarify a little bit more in detail of why that was done. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
So I'm sorry, I missed what Councilman C. Eight said. Did you say that they had to wait until the binder coat went down?
I think that Mr. Frillen can better explain that, but I think the concern of C.J. Ferry was that that was the final coat. It's not the final coat.
Even if it's not the final coat, though, why would we be digging through any new work just been done?
So you have a baby binder, which is what's down there right now, and then you could essentially still cut a baby binder? Then they put their asphalt, their final top coat, just like a regular driveway would be done?
I understand that, but why wouldn't we do that before the baby binder went down?
Yeah, so we'll ask Mr. Frillen those questions when he comes down today. Next, citizens' input.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. As I sit in my vacation home watching the school committee meeting last night, I'm reminded again why we need change on the school committee. Committee of four plus the mayor again acted against the interests of the city of Fall River. Kevin Aguirre made a motion to terminate the superintendent and serve him three months' pay. Mr. Aguirre made the motion in public session, and Mayor Coogan and Mark Costa said he couldn't make that motion in open session, and it's not allowed. How is that not allowed? Then the motion was made to discuss the issue in executive session for the next meeting, and the committee of four even voted that motion down. I think it's dangerous for the city to have a rogue school committee who have no regard for transparency and no regard for doing the right thing for our city. They went into executive session to discuss the superintendent's departure. Why couldn't it be discussed in front of the people? When you are utilizing taxpayer dollars, you should be as transparent as possible. This happens a lot. The superintendent's evaluation was crafted behind closed doors by Mimi Laravee. Evaluations are not being released in their entirety, and the reason given by the school department, it could jeopardize their position on the school committee. So here we have the school department politically protecting members of the school committee, protecting information which may hurt their reelection, and the school department admitted to it. This is a shame to the community. We need a group of individuals who represent us. Also, I share grave concerns about the administration refusing to pay vendors for their efforts. We need to act legally and appropriately. We do not want to tarnish our reputation with the business community. We also do not want our city to be sued. I believe the City Council has a duty to make sure the laws of our city are followed. We need to direct the mayor to follow the charter. Section 9-14 of the city charter states in relevant part, "It shall be the duty of the mayor to see that the charter is faithfully followed and that all city agencies and city employees comply with its provisions. Whenever it appears to the mayor that a city agency or city employee is failing to follow this charter, the mayor shall, in writing, cause notice to be given to such city agency or city employee directing compliance with the charter. If it shall appear to the City Council that the mayor personally is not following the charter, the City Council shall, by resolution, direct the attention of the mayor to those areas in which it believes there's a failure to comply with the charter. We should direct the attention of the mayor for violations of this city charter where it comes to ruling citizens' input and school committee members' motions are out of order and for the refusal to pay vendors on the school committee side. The mayor said it is currently a school committee bill, however," quote unquote, "but it will soon be a city bill." Kevin Aguirre said he asked the chairman of the school committee to add the superintendent's removal to the agenda, and the chairman didn't do that. Why is Mayor Coogan acting like the committee of four? Why can't I, as a lay citizen, hear my elected officials talk about the removal of the superintendent? Why do they have to hide? Why can't I look at how my elected officials evaluated the superintendent? Why can't I see the wrongdoing that my superintendent has done in a report? Also, why does Mayor Coogan like to argue with his own school committee members but gets flustered with the superintendent, who's a disgrace to the city of Fall River? I believe the actions by the committee of four are not only incompetent but dangerous. This type of system of checks and balances in place, I am worried the committee of four will pick a new superintendent who will be loyal to their special interests, and they will get the same protection the superintendent received. Colin Dias.
Thank you. Is that it, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to just address this council on what's been happening, and then we're going to go right into the budget presentations, as our Corporation Council does need to leave due to an engagement with his children. So we're going to honor him first and let him do what he needs to do. I'd like to take this moment to address this honorable body with respect to the bullying claim leveled against Councilor Kadim. First, the City Council was elected to serve this community as a legislative body. Part of that ethical responsibility includes, but is not limited to, asking questions, sometimes tough questions, holding the administration accountable, and sometimes that means calling out statements or misrepresentations. I personally believe that over the last three and a half years as City Council President, I run an impartial and decisive meeting. There has been some stimulating debate over the last few years. Some of that debate has turned contentious. But in my opinion, any debate that has happened or will happen that raises concerns of bullying or disrespect, I have and I will continue to intervene. Council leadership and other city councilors have spoken on this specific issue that we were speaking about the other night. I want to remind the City Council, the department heads who are here, and the mayor that this council should not be restricted in its attempts to ask respectful questions and hold people accountable. That was what we were elected to do. One of the most important roles as a City Council is to review and approve the proposed annual budget. The debate on the budget is not personal. We have real work to do as a council. We have duties and responsibilities as a council to ask questions, sometimes tough, but always with the priority to have accurate information and to allow us to do what is best for this community. I look forward to a spirited, healthy, and free debate. We need to get back, and we will get back, right now to the work the Fall River voters elected us to do, which is to ask questions, have healthy debate, and hold people accountable. Mr. Corporation Council, please.
Mr. President, could I just?
Mr. President, is there any questions on that comment?
I would really like to just get right to our budget.
I would like to do that, but I think Councilman C. One has a question or a comment, and I may have to after that. So I know it's a well-written speech, and it comes from the heart, but maybe Council Kadim has a comment, and maybe I do have.
I would respectfully ask that we reserve these comments to a later time at this point. If the council doesn't want to approve that request that I've made, if you want to override my decision, by all means, if you want to override the chair's decision, that's fine. But I want to make a comment. I want to make it brief. We have some possible litigation that's before us, and I'd like to end it there.
If I may, do I have a flaw?
Yes.
I just feel like I've got to respond with regards to the claims and make a public statement. Quite frankly, I think the claims are frivolous, but that doesn't take away from someone's opinion or feelings that transpired. What I will say is, I will apologize if I offended Ms. Sahadi for the use of the word "lie." I will not apologize for my conduct or my line of questioning. In fact, just going back, and I would urge the public, I would urge the department heads to go back, review the meeting on June 8th between 1 hour 36 minutes and 2 hours and 8 minutes, and see the line of questions. We were provided a slide that showed $1.25 million in deficits within various departments. $300,000 in the police department, $430,000 in the fire department, $120,000 in the law department, an additional $400,000 in solid waste. I did not include snow and ice, which by law is allowed to be deficit spent. My line of questioning went back to the fact that we had three quarterly budget reviews. I specifically asked, at what point did you, meaning the CFO, know about the deficits, and at what point does the administration come down for the transfers? The response during this conversation was, from the CFO, "As long as I've been here, transfers have only been done at year-end." My response was, "Oh, that is such a lie. Maybe I should have used what you just said, a misrepresentation, or what you stated during that time, that it simply was not true. Maybe I should have used inaccurate, not factual." But at no point did I think the word "lie" was an offensive word. To go further, Ms. Sahadi even stated that she can go back and look, but she can, I can tell, and this is a quote, "I can tell you factually that last year, the year before, the year before that, the transfers were done, matter of fact, the meeting had to be scheduled before July 15th." After the meeting, I received a letter, we all received a letter, saying that there was bullying, there was workplace harassment. We also received in that letter about, I believe it was 10 year-end transfers that took place in the month of July. And I will state that I went back after that letter, went onto the city website, looked at all the council agendas, going back to 2016. There were 46, 46 transfers and appropriations that were done, broken down by calendar of the year. 11 in 2016, 8 in 2017, 7 in 2018, 11 in 2019, 6 in 2020, 3 in 2021. And all we were provided were 10 transfers, and we were told that they were only solely done at year-end. In the letter, she also stated, "It is a well-established municipal finance practice employed by municipalities across the Commonwealth to make transfers between budgets at the end of the fiscal year." That's correct. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4433B, allows for year-end transfers. But Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4431, specifically states that no department financed by municipal revenue, or in whole or in part by taxation, of any city, town, except Boston, shall incur a liability in excess of the appropriation made for the use of such department. Each item recommended by the mayor and voted by the council and cities, and each item voted by town meeting in towns being considered as a separate appropriation. I specifically asked if department heads were told to reevaluate their budget, rework their budget, and the response from the mayor was no. Councilor in Seat Four asked a question about overrides. The CFO stated to this council that overrides were given, approved by her to allow them to deficit spend, in direct violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 31. She continues on, "Therefore, my statement that these transfers are generally done at year-end was not a lie." She also stated, "There were two small transfers in fiscal year 2017, which I did not recall on the spot, as well as the transfers to cover the cost of the settlement of the police retropayment in fiscal year 2018." So if I was off on my basis in saying that the statement is a lie, that we only receive year-end transfers, then why is it in 2016, calendar year 2016, this council had appropriation and transfer orders in January 8th, January 26th, March 8th, May 24th, June 14th, June 28th, July 12th, August 16th, September 27th, October 25th, and November 8th. 2017, January 10th, March 14th, March 21, April 11th, May 16th, June 27th, July 11th, November 14th, 2008, March 27th, April 24th, May 15th, July 12th, 8:15, September 11th, October 9th, 2019, January 22nd, February 5th, February 19th, March 5th, March 19th, April 23rd, May 14th, June 4th, July 15th, August 12th, December 16th, calendar year 2020, March 10th, April 14th, May 5th, June 23rd, July 14th, November 17th, 2021, the current year that we're in, February 9th, March 9th, April 6th. So again, I will say that I apologize to Ms. Sahadi if the word "lie" was offensive. But I will ask you, Mr. President, how should I have described the statement that was before us, when I have a list of transfers that have come down before the City Council? Is it not within my role and responsibility to ask questions with regards to a deficit of $1.25 million? So now we've got budgets, we've got department heads coming before us. Can I not question anything now? How do I go now, asking questions and doing my role and my responsibility as a City Councilor? Was I out of line when I said, when we were told by the administration that we only have year-end transfers, when department heads are allowed to overspend the appropriation of the City Council, that I cannot make a statement that it was a lie? And that itself, that statement is seen as offensive? Okay, I apologize. But that statement was a misrepresentation, not true, not accurate, not factual. I presented all the information that's on the website. I'm not sure what I can do as a counselor. I'm just trying to hold people accountable, just like I'm going to be held accountable. We'll let the attorneys figure out whether or not I created a hostile work environment or I was bullying. I can tell you that I have a lot of respect for Ms. Sahadi. I have never bullied her, nor would I bully her, okay? But at the end of the day, the constituents of Fall River will make a determination as to whether or not I should be sitting in Seat One. That's it. But I will continue to do my job, as I mentioned to Councilor in Seat Three, that I was elected to do, and ask tough questions. And that the responses to my questions, if they are not accurate, if they are not factual, then I am going to call somebody out on it. With that, I yield.
Councilor in Seat Three, Councilor Kilby.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I think Council Kadim apologized. We have to move on, and I give him a lot of credit for doing that. But sometimes, in my opinion, his passion gets away with him a little bit in terms of, I wouldn't call it anger, but I would call it somewhat name-calling. It's happened before, and I know he has passion for his job, and he has passion for the city. I just sometimes think the language is too much. And when I talk to a department after the meeting and the person's very emotional, it affects me. And it's happened before. So I appreciate the fact that he apologized, and I urge Mayor Coogan to totally retreat this investigation, and let's just move on, and maybe a different style, a style is needed, maybe from many of us. I appreciate what Councilman C. One has just stated. I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in Seat Eight, Councilor Pereira.
I think that at one point or another, as counselors, sometimes we get overzealous on a specific issue. The issue that I have, that I will talk about, because I don't think we should be talking about the issue, there is an investigation. As an investigator for over 30 years, I wouldn't want anybody talking about stuff. I'd want to do my investigation. But the problem that I have is that we were told that we were not to ask questions, that it was a presentation, and we'd be asking questions today and through the budget. Councilor Lee asked a question, and you told him that, "Hold your questions, they're going to be done at budget time." And then other counselors got to speak without being given the same message. So I would just think that if a message is given to one of us, that message is given to all of us, and I don't think we'd be here today discussing any of this had that directive of yours been followed through by all the counselors. I just don't think we should continue debating this. There is an investigation. I think we should move on to what goes on. And I get it, we're all passionate. I've been passionate and, you know, said things that I kind of regret the way I said them before, because I do care about this city and the community. However, I think that the directives need to be the same for everyone. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. And just for clarity on that situation, I personally allowed that debate to go on because I was specific with my comments that we were not going to have a debate regarding the FY 22 fiscal year budget. The discussion that was had, that was brought up by Councilor in Seat One, was information that was brought to his attention regarding FY 21, which is the current fiscal year that we are in today. So I felt, as a council, and I wasn't the only one that felt this way, because majority of councilors spoke, about the information that came out at that presentation was nothing more, any different than a point of information anybody ever had. So my directive of not speaking about the FY 22 budget was strictly that, FY 22. We had that presentation. But the fiscal year that we're in now, and we're getting quarterly reports on, and we had some new information that was developing before our eyes, I found that that was absolutely pertinent to find that information out, and the councilors to be made aware. And I think a lot was learned as a result of that debate that was had, and we've all been apprised of what's happened. So that's the reason why I allowed that conversation to be had.
That's fine, and we can agree to disagree.
We sure can.
That's fine. We can respect each other. I totally disagree with that, but-
That's fine.
-have respect for your point of view. With that, I yield.
Thank you very much. We are now going to get into our budget deliberations. Unfortunately, do you have 15 minutes?
I agree with you.
Okay. So the law department is going to be coming back tomorrow. First, I did try to get him here, but we had had this debate. So Attorney Ramsey, are you available tomorrow?
I am.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, we are going to have our Corporation Council through Administrative Services be the first one up tomorrow. Just let me know. Let me know. Thank you very much. Mrs. Sahadi, Administrative Services, City Administration. So just so the council and the community is aware of what we're doing right now, I have decided to work on a calendar for tonight and tomorrow. We are also going to be having debate next Tuesday and Wednesday. If we need additional days and additional debate, we will proceed to the following week. We've had our school department presentation and debate already last week. We are now going to enter into the discussions through Administrative Services tonight, which will handle city administration, Mr. McCoy, human resources, MIS, and purchasing, followed by general government with the mayor's office, the city clerk, the city council, elections and veterans, followed by insurance and claims, community services, which is our city planning, inspectional services, health and human services, and the library, and then following, last but certainly not least, community utilities with the water divisions and sewer.
Mr. President?
Councilor in Seat One, Councilor Kadim.
When are we going to have discussion on revenue?
Madam Clerk, do you have the revenue date? Do we have that to the agenda?
It's not been added to the agenda, Councilor.
Okay, so we're going to start our revenue tomorrow prior to the discussions. For some reason, I must have not had revenue. My apologies.
I just didn't see it on there, so I just wanted to know.
My apologies. So we'll start revenue first, so the council's aware, revenue's first item on our agenda tomorrow. Okay? Mr. McCoy, Mrs. Sahadi, welcome.
Thank you. So Council President, on page 117 and 118 are the budgeted line items for the city administrator department or division within the department called City Administration.
Questions on City Administration. City Administration, which is the grant writer, the city administrator. Councilor in Seat One, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. To you, I've got a question with regards to the grant writer position, just the salary. So last year, the grant writer's salary was $66,000, plus, I believe, a $990 CPI, plus holiday pay, which brought us up to 67K. Her current salary, though, is 66,000 and no CPI, so I was just wondering what the logic behind that was.
Well, again, Councilor Kadim, even though this is my department, again, the logic behind it, this started back in January where there was no city administrator, so I do have to defer that to Mrs. Sahadi as to why the CPI was removed.
Mrs. Sahadi, if you could.
Um, I, again, I would have to, um, take a minute and, and look back at her contract, but I believe it's not written in her contract.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I will look for her contract tomorrow and get the answer for you, but I do not believe CPI is included in her contract.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McCoy, through you.
Yep.
Other personnel costs, seventy-five hundred dollars, what is that?
Uh, I get it, I, well, we have a, uh, it looks, it appears that with the description at the end, that there is a, um, other personal cost of seventy-five hundred, it does appear that if, uh, and, and again, this may have been tied in to the, uh, raise issue, whether it was gonna be based on cleaning up the ordinances, or whether it was gonna be a conversation about steps and whatnot, but the ability to, to assign raises, um, you know, if, if, uh, council, you know, if the council had, uh, had approved those, um, those requests and, and, uh, moved those ordinance questions to full, uh, to a full council. So my assumption here is that that was built in, in case, not an automatic salary adjustment, but that to work into the potential of salary increases. And again, I defer to, Mrs. Sahadi would like to add to that, I would like to defer-
Certainly, Mr. McCoy, so this particular contract is not, um, I don't, I don't believe that this particular contract expires on June thirtieth of every year, so this gives the Mayor the ability to increase this contract, um, when in fact it comes back up for reapproval.
So is it my understanding that the Mayor would be looking to increase the Grant Writer's salary from sixty-six thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars, or an eleven percent increase?
That, I can tell you, is not determined at all. I can tell you that that's not in the plan, that has not been in any conversations I've had with the Mayor.
So, based on the zero-based budgeting approach that the administration uses, what is the seventy-five hundred dollars?
Again, it's a combination of, um, potential salary increases that will occur mid-year for both the city administrator's position as well as the Grant Writer's position.
If I, if I may, Councilor, Mrs. Sahadi, um, is this a common practice, and if you can elaborate as to what went into that, because I'm, I'm a little confused and I may-
I'm, I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
Sure, so can you advise us what went into that decision to, uh, put a line item for possible increased salaries, because this is a non-union position, correct?
It is a non-union position, but the, um, contracts for, um, both these positions were not June thirty contracts, so, um, if in fact the Mayor chooses to increase these contracts on January first or the specific date of the renewal, um, it gives him the ability to increase the contracts within the total, um, salary line item, salary, holiday and other line items within the particular department.
Is this, is this a new development? Is this something that we've done in the past, Mrs. Sahadi, considering we've looked at zero-based budgeting? I don't mean to cut you off, Councilor, but I'm a little confused.
Um, in, in the past, we have not included other personnel services, with the exception of a very few departments, which, um, were voted on by this council, um, this particular year, because we have unsettled contracts with ASME and the other unions, we've estimated amounts, so you will see this throughout every budget this year, so that if in fact these contracts are settled for, um, union employees and therefore management employees would be, be receiving more often than not the exact same increase, um, the monies would be available within the budget to spend.
So can I get further clarification then? Of the seventy-five hundred, how much of that is anticipated between the two salaries?
I don't have that information.
Can you respond back through email communication or have it for us tomorrow, Mrs. Sahadi?
If, if-
If possible?
Yes, I will look into it.
Thank you.
And if I may add, co, excuse me, sorry, Councilor Kadeem, if I may, I, there's been absolutely no discussions between myself and the Mayor about a potential increase in salary.
So can I just ask how that seventy-five hundred was arrived? How you arrived that, to that, that figure?
Again, through, Mrs. Sahadi, if you could elaborate?
As I, as I just indicated, I will look back in, in our notes when we had, um, department head meetings and determine, or let you know through email, as Council President indicated, um, what the composition of the seventy-five hundred is.
Thank you, I yield.
Councilor in seat three, Councilor Kilby.
Yep, just one question. In, in the past, the School Department would pick up half the salary for the Grant Writer?
About a year.
That's no longer happening?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. About a year and a half ago, they hired their own Grant Writer, so it has not been, um, I think twenty-one, um, and twenty-two at least have been fully, um, appropriated by the city municipal budget.
I recall it was a very effective arrangement, um, so, how effective is this Grant, Grant Writer is? In the past, when we hired a Grant Writer, we'd always state that she's gonna cover her salary through the monies that she brings in.
Well, certainly this year, um, she's been a godsend to us, because-
Very good.
-with the CARES money in particular, and the eligibility, and, and now going forward with the APRA money, and that's just to men-
So she must be extremely busy.
That's just to mention the two that she's been extremely busy on and still doing her daily work with the other grants that are available to the city.
Yeah, I had a couple of occasions to meet her, and I think she, um, she does wonderful work.
She does.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you, um, might, just a comment to you, um, Council President. Councilor in seat one was asking questions about just the first section, we've had this, um, calendar of which departments are coming before us. You sent an email out on May twenty-eighth, the schedule printed by the Clerk was June seventh, today is June fifteenth, and I heard the words, "I don't believe," "Assumption," "Potential," and "Possibility," and we haven't spoken to the Mayor. So my frustration is, we have seventy-five hundred dollars, doesn't seem like a lot of money, it says it's possible increase to the Grant Writer's salary, but the folks at the table don't know what it is. So how are we supposed to ask questions or, or make decisions on a, on a budget that we know what departments are in front of us and we're getting possibilities, potentials, and assumptions? It's frustrating. The other frustrating thing is to find pages on our desk the night that we walk in, and I, while I appreciate that there's updated pages, there's no rhyme or reason to what, what's been updated on here unless we go now and match them up. Now Veterans is in front of us tonight, um, the Law Department's in front of us tonight, and we have updated pages that are sitting on our desk right before the meeting. That's also frustrating, and I would ask to you, Council President, that this doesn't happen every single night of, of going over this budget, because this isn't fair. With that, I yield.
I agree with you, Councilor. Um, I can't speak to any other specific departments that is before us tonight, with the exception of the Law Department, which we all received an email from Corporation Council this afternoon about a typo in his department. I can't speak to veterans, um, or anything like that. Uh, Mr. McCoy, uh, going forward, when you, um, are putting a document on the city council's desk, I am respectfully requesting a city administrator that you give an outline of what these possible changes are on a letterhead or a very brief summary, so that the councils aren't, take, councilors aren't taken back or, um, uh, looking at this with some confusion. If you can please accommodate that request going forward?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Abs, and, and if I could make a comment on the, on the seventy-five hundred again, before, to my knowledge, again, and as you know, I wasn't here, but to my knowledge, there was discussions, working back with the, with the Subcommittee on Ordinances, to discuss the potential of cleaning up ordinances regarding increase, because some had gone bound, gone past the ceiling, um, and you also had some odd, yeah, I, I wanna say there were sixteen positions under contract, but some of those three specifically had contract positions, but again, not to exceed and had an actual amount, where one of those, I believe, was over. So there, like, the first proposal that was coming back to the ordinance, based on some meetings, I believe, with the Mayor and Councilor one, was looking at the potential of changing the ordinances and at least coming up with a ceiling that, that was related to three percent a year for three years. Okay, and, and I, I can, again, uh, the budget, you know, which, the budget process would start it in January, moved along through the budget season, and I'm assuming in anticipation of that, there may have been some word saying, okay, there may be, uh, raises coming down the pike. Now, I can't, where I am spec, so I would think the basis of this seventy-five had to do with some of those discussions. But then also, um, contract employees, I believe in the past, have also mirrored what happens in collective bargaining, we have the one, one and a half, uh, increase, and that may have been some of the consideration here. But I, I, I admit, I'm saying maybe, and I'm speculating, because again, I was not here and I have not been here, you know, since January.
So, so, Mr. McCoy, I, I respectfully re, re, uh, appreciate your comments, but our Council Vice President articulated a very valid point, right? We have our budget deliberations before us, the city administration is before us for the very first time this evening, this is in a very large, overly complicated department, and the question that Councilor in seat one asked about what future seventy-five hundred dollar, uh, expenses are coming, we, going forward in the rest of this budget deliberation, I'm gonna respectfully ask that the departments that are before us maybe browse and look through of any possible unknowns or newbies such as this, so that we could be able to answer Councilor in seat one's question. So the frustration that our Vice President has is, is, is the same with me, right? We have budget deliberations before us, and I know you're, you're, you're brand-new, Mr. McCoy, and this isn't a direction, uh, reflection on you at this point, but we need to be prepared to answer questions on the municipal budget this evening, tomorrow, and next week. Okay, so, uh, let's, I, I, I know there's been some discussions about getting questions in advance. We, you know, councilors work full-time jobs, councilors have questions, and then councilors might ask one question, might lead to a follow-up question that wouldn't be in writing, right? So, so this very well could have come up. I didn't see it, a colleague of ours did, and he deserves, uh, uh, an answer. So I've requested that Mrs. Sahadi get back to us on this item specifically tomorrow, we're not gonna belabor the point, and we, we will, we will get to that. Council Vice President, you still have a floor?
I just wanted to respond to, um, what Mr. McCoy just said. You are correct that some of these salaries are in ordinance waiting, but the Grant Writer is per contract, so there is no dollar amount next to it, it's just one of the per contract. So, uh, while it says increasing Grant Writer's salary here, that's not what is in ordinance, that's just a per contract. I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Let's notice that as a city administrator, are we still looking? Uh, is that a done deal? Uh, I know he's tempered now and no disregard, to make you feel bad, but where are we? And is he still looking? Uh, is he gonna fit the bill?
Mr. McCoy? I, I, I guess the question would probably be, phew, uh, would be, uh, sent to Mr. McCoy. Mr. McCoy, I guess Councilor Pelletier's question is, are you interim while they find somebody else, or are you interim to see if this is gonna be something that's gonna be a mutual beneficial relationship?
Well, I am, I am interim, um, on it, quite frankly, Councilor Pelletier, I have no idea if it is still posted on the website, I have not looked. So I imagine if it is posted on the website, they'll still entertain cover letters and, uh, and, and resumes, both HR and the Mayor's Office.
It'd be nice if he let you know what's going on.
Well, again-
You, you took a leave of absence there.
I know I have a letter of appointment for ninety days and there is the, the potential of, of sixty more, and right now, that's what I'm, I'm working on.
All right, so we, we don't know-
And there's plenty of work to do, as you know.
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a tough job, and we all know what, uh, Mr. Sahadi went through doing both jobs, and, uh, that's stressful enough, but we're sitting here, you know, what's gonna happen? We gonna have one or not have one? I mean, I wish you all the luck in, you know, in three months, but three months, it's a lot of figures to learn, a lot of department heads, and, uh, you, you can't learn this in two months, that's for sure.
Well, then again, it's a lot easier starting from July one with, hopefully, we have a budget in place and-
Right, I just wanted to know the status, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat five, Council Lee.
Uh, thank you. Whenever I look at the budget, I always look at the other costs, so, you know, Council seat one talked about the other, uh, personnel cost, and on the side, it does say, "Increase Grant Writer's Salary," so I'm just asking in general, if there, if that line item wasn't there for seventy-five hundred dollars, and the, the Mayor wanted to raise, give somebody a raise up to that figure, we would have to approve that raise, correct? Am I right or wrong?
You're incorrect.
Okay.
As long as there were, um, available funds within the Administration Department, you would not have to increase-
If there wasn't available funds?
If there was not available increases, um, within that department, and, you know, it was early in the year, we would need to come, um, and ask for a transfer, um, from-
Okay, so there would be some level of city council-
Another source.
So there would be some level of city council approval if there was such a thing to happen, correct?
Assuming there were no other funding sources within the Administration Department.
So this, so, so this, again, this almost feels as though we're looking to approve it before it's even suggested for a raise, right? Is that, I mean, that's essentially what is being asked, right? That we, if we approve, if we approve this, we're, seventy-five hundred dollars, we're proving the ability to, for the Mayor to have a raise-
Right, you're approving the ability for-
Or give a raise to-
You're approv, approving the ability for the Mayor to evaluate, um, the Grant Writer's performance, and when her contract is up at the first of the year, have the ability to increase that contract.
Okay, all right, that's all, that's, that, I just needed that kind of clarification, so, all right, thank you, I yield, thank you.
Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
I'm gonna switch to a different department, um-
Uh, Councilor, we, we can just stick to administr, uh, City Administration?
Yeah, oh, City-
City Administration, and then we're gonna, we can go to, uh, the next department, HR, et cetera.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Then I'll yield and I'll wait.
Thank you. Any further questions on City Administration?
Uh-uh.
Harry Nunn, thank you. Next department is going to be Human Resources, Mrs. Coelho, please come down.
So, um, to speak to the same line item that you're seeing in the HR Department, because you will see it throughout the entire, um, budget this year, um, Mrs. Coelho's, um, also has a contract, but she, um, receives a CPI. All of the other individuals in this particular department are management employees, and so they would receive the same percentage increase that the ASME contract would be settled for, and so in order to put a placeholder in, because we're currently under, um, negotiations with the ASME contract, um, we chose, and you'll again see this throughout all of the departments, include an amount to cover any increases that might occur, um, as a result of settling the ASME contract for those individuals who are not part of the union in this particular department.
So can you refer us to exactly what line? Are you talking about other personnel costs?
I am.
Personnel costs?
I am.
Okay, so the twenty-six hundred dollars would be specifically for a possibility of increases to those in the HR Department, which is four individuals?
Actually, three, because the Director receives a CPI.
And is contracted.
And is contracted, that's correct.
Right, so that would be those, within those three employees.
That's correct.
So, i, if I may, uh, just, just to kinda get the elephant out of the room, so, Mrs. Sahadi, did you indicate to us that in most of these departments, and I have looked at the budget, but I, I, there's some departments that I haven't seen, other personnel costs are apparent in every single department?
That's correct.
What, is there an actual number associated with what those other personnel costs are in this fiscal year's budget?
Um, there certainly is, um, at this particular point, because we're under negotiations with, in particular, the ASME Union, and then the superiors, as well as now going back to the table with Patrol and Firefighters, I don't think we should be at liberty to discuss what those percentage increases might be estimated at.
Okay, but forget about collective bargaining, Mrs. Sahadi, I'm talking about, like, you take, uh, I'm sorry, those individuals in the HR Department are, are under collective bargaining. This is something that I haven't seen in six years, so I'm sorry if I'm taken back by this. What, why this way, this time?
We thought it was beneficial to each of the departments to, um, be aware of what those increases would be, um, and together with discussions with, um, the Mayor, and, and quite frankly, uh, Mr. McCoy was not here at the time, um, he thought, and, and I as well, thought it was important to share what those increases would look like in each one of the departments.
What have we done in previous fiscal years?
Well, as you know, in fiscal twenty-one for Police and Fire, it wasn't budgeted, and that is the hot topic of the transfers for Police and Fire at year-end. So we're trying to be proactive and include those potential increases within each of the departments going forward with this fiscal year, with the anticipation that, um, the settlement on the contracts that are open will be a lot more timely, and we won't be settling two years' worth of contracts at any given- and we won't be settling two years' worth of contracts at any given point in time.
Questions for HR, Human Resources. And just so the councils are aware, we have the ability to reduce, reject, or approve this budget. So, if the council is taking exception to the fact, and we haven't done it for like four years now or something, but we can go through each line item appropriation in each department and reduce the number if we wanted to do that. By saying we will, I don't want to say that's the need of the council. But if the council doesn't want to see something like this, we would be able to reduce the salary line in each specific department.
That is correct.
Thank you. Human Resources, Councillor in Seat Eight, Councillor Pereira.
The only question that I have is, and I've said this, and because you're all here, it's, I find it unnecessary to say it again. But I find that Mrs. Coelho is the only head of a department that has her contract renewed, and she has to come before the council. Why is that and no one else does? I don't think that that's fair to her. Again, I'm just looking at all department heads getting fair level treatment. And I don't know if the mayor has to send something down to change that.
He does, it has to be a change in the ordinance.
Well, then, I would hope that he brings that before the ordinance committee, because I just, I don't think it's fair.
I'm just.
Everything else, I mean, there's not much in this department that we can really look at. I have gotten in there, and I've got to say, I think it's a great crew that's in there working. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor in Seat Four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I have kind of a process and kind of a budget question. I was hoping, I know that Corporation Counsel had to leave for graduation, so I can ask him tomorrow night. But Mrs. Coelho, when you work on your budget, is there a certain percentage? Do you work with Corporation Counsel on how much outside legal he might need for inter-employee issues?
I don't know.
So, and I'm asking, because I know a few months ago, there was an inter-employee disagreement that I think both sides went in and spoke with you all, and then an outside investigator was, was hired. And speaking to one of those involved yesterday, they haven't heard anything back from that investigation. They didn't ask for the investigation, so they're not looking for any resolution. However, I'm wondering how much, and I could ask Mr. Ramsey tomorrow evening, how much is actually done in-house as far as your department talking when employees are having issues? And what is the percentage that ends up going to outside legal? If it's issues between employees that both work for the city?
I can tell you that the majority is done in-house. I spend a great, great deal on grievances, on employee relations issues. That is the bulk of what I do most of the time. So, only if the administration decides to go outside and get outside counsel or get someone from the outside, that's when it's done. Otherwise, I think every department head that's here and all the department heads know that I assist them daily on a regular basis. We have issues every single day.
Oh, I, I believe that.
So, I have to honestly tell you, the majority is all done in-house.
Okay, and so if, so for these employees, and I'm asking, they're not asking, I'm asking, are they then given a follow-up on the outside investigation? Does that not come from your department, would that come from the administration?
I'm not sure which investigation.
It went outside a few months back. I'm just wondering what the process is for, for employees that maybe it comes, where does that investigation go? Does it go back to Corporation Counsel? Does it go, does it end up in your office? Does it go to the, the mayor's?
To the mayor's office, in this case.
And then he follows up, doesn't follow up? I'm just wondering what the process is.
I would think, I, I can't speak for him.
Okay, and I can, I can certainly ask Mr. Ramsey how much he puts in. I'm trying to figure out what the rhyme or reason is on, on when it goes to outside versus staying in-house. So, it's not your decision, it's Mayor Klugan's decision, or whoever the mayor is at the time?
Absolutely. But like I said, we, only on rare cases, things go to the outside.
Okay. I will ask Mr. Ramsey about the financial piece. But Mr. McCoy, could you, or, or Mrs. Coelho, could you ask the mayor what happens when those go back to his office? If there are, if they follow up with the employees involved? Because if we're spending money on outside legal, I know it's not your department, Mrs. Coelho, but law was in front of us tonight, then the employees involved should at least know what, what the outcome of that was. And I would also like to know what the mayor's process is for making the decision on what, what goes outside and what stays in. And the reason I'm asking, Council President, is, is this. Some things are going outside, it doesn't, I'm not sure what the reasoning is. But then we have things that the mayor's chair of the school department, and there are complaints being filed, and those aren't going on the agenda for executive session. And I will say now, because I'm mad, that last night there was an executive session, I myself filed a complaint on June, I'm sorry, May 11th, didn't make it public, let the school committee do their job, and it hasn't been done. So, why is the administration sending some things out immediately? And then, as the chair of the school department, I'm sorry, as the chair of the school committee, not putting other complaints on agenda?
So, Mrs. Coelho, I, I guess I'm more on a human resource level, right? I know you've been here for a long time. So, what is the general policy by addressing, I think this is your question, right? What is your general policy for deciding on, on what claims or assertions, should there be any, on individuals in and around City Hall or in the city of Fall River that does have a claim against them? What is your process?
So, depending on the magnitude or the seriousness of the situation and so on and so forth, I will consult with Attorney Ramsey at that point. And then obviously, discussions do take place with the administration. And a decision is made whether or not it stays in-house or goes out. But that's on rare, rare cases. Because on a day-to-day basis, I, I don't go to the administration with the situations that come up, because, I mean, I got grievances every day, I got complaints from employees every single day. So, I don't go and, you know, it's not a micromanaged situation. So, I have to evaluate the situation and see the extent of what the problem may be, who's involved, and so on and so forth. And at that point.
But you take every grievance that comes in seriously and you address it?
Absolutely. And I think every department head can, you know, attest to that.
I appreciate that, I wish it was also happening on the other side. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councillor in Seat Three, Councillor Kilby.
Just quick, to try to clarify, Council, a little bit of a question. When it comes to discipline of employees, that's a matter for executive session. That's not open to the public.
No, it's not.
So, you get a complaint, and you probably judge in terms of how severe it is, whether or not to handle it within the court of honor in your office, or whether to go to Alan Ramsey and the mayor, depending on the seriousness of it.
Correct.
And then, if, if a, a hearing is needed with Corporation Counsel, with, with Mr. McCoy, and yourself, then you have a hearing. Then you can pin out whatever discipline you want to pin out, if it's appropriate. But in more serious situations, outside counsel is needed. So, I'll hock him back years ago, it was a Mrs. Harris. And I believe she sued the city for, based on racial discrimination, whatever. So, Council Per, concur with this. So, that was a case where outside counsel was needed, because it was possibly going to be litigated on someone's, on her behalf. So, just to clarify, I, I just wanted to go through the steps in terms of what I think is, is happening within your office. I mean, I know you handle complaints by employees, small, medium, and large. You handle to the best of your ability. And the more serious ones, of course, you have to bring to the attention of the, of the mayor and Corporation Counsel, so. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. In Seat Two, Councillor Dion.
Yeah, just one follow-up question on that. So, with the different degrees of complaints. So, if one rises to the occasion of being serious enough to have an outside law firm look into the complaint, are the results of that complaint put in the individual's file? Like in other words, is there a letter, is there some form of documentation that states, yes, the investigation, it took place, it's been completed, the person's been cleared? Or, yes, the investigation was completed, we felt there was an issue, but not serious enough for determination, but this letter is in the file documenting the fact that the, that it did take place?
That's an excellent question. So, nothing goes into, and I know Councillor Kadim, who's been doing a lot of HR work in the past, would probably agree with this. Nothing goes into personnel file without the employee first knowing that this is going in your personnel file. We can't just put documentation in there. But that is the proper, the proper, those are the proper steps. Once you, you know, meet with the employee, you address the situation, or if there's a disciplinary action involved, whatever it may be, then at that point, with the knowledge of the employee, it goes into the personnel file.
So, ultimately, again, because I'm talking about, you know, obviously, what's more serious, if it's going to outside legal, it has to be very serious. You're not going to put it to that point if it doesn't raise to that level. So, the determination would be in the file, and the employee would know it was there?
Absolutely. Once a discussion takes place with the employee.
Okay, thank you.
Even if it's coming from an outside potty, you know, an outside, outside counsel.
Right, because I guess my concern would be if it was serious enough to go to that level for it just to go away, and there never be any documentation, no paper trail, it would all, it would make sense to me to go to that extent, and then there'd be nothing, so.
Correct, understood, you're welcome.
Thank you, with that, I yield.
Councillor in Seats Seven, Six.
Seven.
We need a little levity in here right now. Councillor in Seat Six, Councillor Peckham.
I don't even want to comment. All right, one question I have is, so, I go back to the City Administrator when we were discussing your office. And we asked about the other personnel costs of $7,500. And it is earmarked, increased grant writer salary to the right of it. So, I go to Human Resources, and it's other personal, personnel cost of $2,600. But there's no notation to the side to why that money is being set aside or what it's earmarked for. And then I go to the next MIS, and it, it tells you what the money is being put aside for. Is there a reason why HR doesn't have any earmark to the side of it?
Exactly. So, those individuals would receive exactly what the ASME contract would be negotiated at. So, we don't know what that's going to be, we're in negotiations now, we've had our first meeting, we've got a second one scheduled. So, in terms of, you know, my presentation to you with regard to the budgets, that's what that amount would represent. If it's specific enough that the mayor talked to the department heads with regard to a specific item, so let's go back to the administration, where a discussion would have been had with the grant writer, then in terms of being as transparent as possible in this document, we attempted to include that information.
Okay, now.
Some you have more information on than others.
All right, and with the other personnel costs, and I know Council President had asked this, and if you answered, I apologize. Do we have a total figure for the budget of what other personnel cost is going to be? Instead of me going through this entire thing and adding it all up, do you know roughly what the amount is at the end?
I don't have, I don't have that with me, but I did prepare an internal document with each one of the departments and what the total was. And I can at least provide you with the total.
Okay, I'd appreciate it, if you don't mind. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Oh, sorry, Councillor in Seat Seven, Councillor Pelletier.
Thank you. There's quite a few, I guess, vacancies throughout this, this book, and they're all pretty well-funded. How does one department head let you know when he needs somebody? Or you just advertise the jobs that are open? How does that work?
We have a system in place, so every department head, I will not post or fill any position without a department head first filling out a request to fill vacancy. That request to fill vacancy goes to the mayor's office. I check to make sure that, you know, the, the salaries are correct in accordance to city ordinance and so on and so forth. If I have any questions as to whether or not, because there's a section in the request to fill vacancy, whether these monies are budgeted or not. So, then I would place, you know, I obviously work with Mrs. Sahadi to ask her, hey, you know, it doesn't look like these folks have money in a budget, how do you want to proceed from going forward? So, no position gets posted without the department head, like I said, filling out a request to fill vacancy, goes to the mayor's office. Now that we do have a city administrator, we'll be going to the city administrator as well. So, if there's any questions, but, and I question a lot of things that come through to make sure that, you know, are we doing this? Is there money in the budget? So, that's the process. And then I'll decide if it's a union position, it has to be posted. If it's, even if it's not a union position, we post internally, because we could have people interested in these positions. And then we go externally. And somebody had asked earlier if the city administrator's position was still posted. Yes, it is in the website. So, that's the process. I get audited on this, these things when the auditors come through, so we have to have a process in place.
And to Mary, do you know how many vacancies are open throughout this budget?
Again, I, I do have the same general spreadsheet that we just spoke about. A number of them, or the majority of them, are in public safety, so they are in police and fire. And so, both those complements, we are bringing the complements back up to where they were prior to the pandemics, prior to the FY '21 budget. And that's actually true with regard to each of the others. There is a tab under, I believe it's the CHOTS tab, that will show some historical data on the employee counts in each of the departments. And you can see where in a number of these departments, we are bringing the employee count back up to what was approved in the FY '20 budget. But because of all of the uncertainties last year with the pandemic, and the fact that they were vacant, a decision was made at that time, not really knowing what our state aid was going to be, to remove all of those positions. So, there are a lot of them sprinkled throughout the entire budget document in varying departments that have vacant positions, that we are hopeful that this council will allow the administration to put back in, because we've got a number of departments that are really short-staffed. And police and fire are our biggest ones, of course.
But most of these, the monies are funded for, for the vacancies?
In this '22 budget, that is correct.
And you have a feeling that most of them will come back up and use the people that they need?
I'm hopeful, we'll be getting to the MIS budget shortly. And we'll talk a little bit about the vacancy and the issue with filling that particular position in the IT department.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Excuse me.
I yield.
Mr. President, if, Mrs. Sahadi, do you have this document?
Do I have what document?
The document that shows the amounts that we keep talking about, other personnel costs throughout the budget.
Did, did I prepare something?
Did you, yes, did you say you have it?
It is not in your budget book, but of, yes, of course, I maintain that, so the mayor would know what we were talking about in terms of what we're anticipating those percentage increases to be.
So, could, I'm sorry, excuse me, Council President, could we have that? So, as we go along, we can refer to it, so we know what we're talking about before we go on to any more departments?
Well, you have, you have it in every budget. What Councillor Peckham asked is if I have the total.
Right.
So, I can take this document as well as everyone and add up the other professional cost in every department and put it on a spreadsheet. I'm saying to you that I've already generally kept track, I'm not sure if it's up to date, but we kept track as we did the budget hearings with each of the departments, so that we could keep track of what the potential increases would be, if they were increases that the mayor may have been anticipating in terms of contract increases, or whether they were increases due to the lack of being able to find a position or fill a position due to a particular set of tasks or skills that a particular person has. Or if they were, and I don't want to make it the third category necessarily, no category is more important than the other, but what the anticipated, or at least an estimate on what the percentage increase would be in all. Madeline, correct me if I'm wrong, five unions, I believe, that we have here within the city, all of which will have, eight, eight, eight unions that we have here within the city, all of which are going to end up with June 30, 2021 dates in terms of expiration.
Mrs. Sahadi, would it be, would it be an arguable task for you to maybe, we take a five-minute recess, and you go get that spreadsheet and let the council know what monies and salaries for other professional personnel costs would be? Because I think that's really. that's really, I'm kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, colleagues, but I'm kind of sensing, based on the questions, that these questions are just going to continue?
Well, I take it we'll wait till tomorrow. I mean, we'll meet tomorrow.
Okay. If that's the will of the council, we'll wait till tomorrow.
So, I think it would be nice to see the big picture.
I mean, I, while we can, we could do some, we can allow the discussion to continue, and I could gladly sit here and add it all up for everybody if you'd like.
Tomorrow's tomorrow. It's in 24 hours away.
I get it. Do you understand where I'm coming from, though, Counselor?
Yes.
I mean, we've got counselors...
I want to overtalk.
No, I get it, no problem. But we've got like five of you that are looking at me, saying that they've got questions, and I am trying my best to find a way to get a resolve here. Every single counselor asked a question. Your point of information, Counselor.
We normally just vote on these kind of things, right? We can just vote to say, yes, no, we want to see this documentation, right?
Sure can.
All right. I call that vote.
That's certainly a possibility.
I yield.
Okay.
I yield. I didn't even have the floor, so I'm just one council.
You want to vote on it, vote on it.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I think, actually, it was two issues. I believe that Counselor in seat six brought up the totality of the number, and Counselor in seat seven asked about vacancies, and that I believe also, if I heard correctly, that you had a compiled list of all vacancies as well?
I keep track of it as I prepare the budget, so I would know what we're talking about in terms of, let's just assume that we don't have the appropriate revenue to cover the expenditures. So, to present to the mayor and say, this is where you could cut positions that are not filled, I would keep track of that kind of information on an annual budgetary basis. So, I do.
So, I guess ultimately it was twofold. If people want to vote, I would make a motion that we take a vote, and see who wants the information and who doesn't. Is that a yield?
It's up to the president. I just made a comment.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
I'm sorry. I just made a comment. It's up to the president to assess. That's fine. I just...
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Mrs. Sahadi, if you may, please go get that document.
For the City Council will now be called back into order. We adjourned our meeting, or we didn't. We took a brief recess so that our CFO would be able to go get the paperwork that is before us here this evening. Before this council right now is the status of salary changes as requested, which we've been talking about. In addition to that, we also have vacant positions in the FY '22 budget. So I will turn the floor over to the councillor in seat one, because councillor in seat two, you have no further questions, because you had the floor prior to recess.
No, I yield it, thank you.
Fair enough, thank you.
Councillor President, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
So I went and printed the worksheets that we have been maintaining. They might be slightly different than what originally got put in your budget on 5/15, because I can see a couple, especially in the first two columns, that might have either gotten reversed or a decision was made by the administration to build it into the budget when it was originally not built into the budget. So this is just a working copy so that you could at least have an idea of what the totals were. I can certainly try to go back and go through each item and update it as we go along for the next few evenings. But just, you know, in case you look at it and one says "built in" or one says "not built in", but ultimately it got built in, those would have been decisions that were made by the administration prior to the submission of this budget on 5/15, May 15.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. Councillor in seat one, Councillor Cadim.
Thank you. Just quickly on the documents that we just received. So the vacancies, there are 60.5 full-time equivalents totaling $3.2 million rounded up. Of the 60.5 or the $3.2 million, how much of these vacancies are new positions to the budget? So they're vacancies because the positions are being added in, as opposed to just vacancies because somebody's no longer in the position?
I can certainly understand that question. I can't answer that. I don't know. I can tell you that if we went, and I guess my next question would be, how do you define "new"? Because the majority of these positions that were added back in '22, they were actually in the '20 budget and funded, some of which had staffed, they were staffed in '20, and for one reason or another, an individual left. And so they're currently not being staffed. Some are positions that were not in the '21 budget. I would have to take each budget side by side to determine which positions were not in '21. However, if you look at the tab, I believe it's the tab that says "charts", you'll see the comparison of several years' worth of staffing in each of the departments. And you will be able to see, oh yes, that one right there, Mr. Cadim. You will be able to see from that that a lot of them were funded in '20, were not funded in '21, as I indicated earlier, because of the pandemic and the uncertainty of the revenue, and are being funded again in this particular year. In addition, this was prepared back in the early stages of preparing the budget. And I can tell you by looking at it just briefly, some of them have been filled. So you've got some of these positions that are currently filled, although may not have been when the budget was presented to you. In addition, we have Ms. Curran here tonight to speak about the Health Department and the Counseling on Aging. As you know, the state of emergency has been lifted. And so the senior aides and the senior aide coordinator, those positions are now being refilled. So those people were laid off a year ago, August, and the majority of them are coming back. However, on May 15, or prior to that, obviously, when this budget was actually drafted, those positions would have been vacant and therefore are on this worksheet.
So if I look at page 22, based on the chart that you just referred me to, so if I understand this correctly, so FY '22, the employee count is 841.4. So that's roughly up 20 employees from FY '21. So, holding true, that would be 20 new positions added to the budget that weren't there for fiscal year '21. But if we go to '20, I can see that some of those positions were in the FY '20 budget but removed.
And that's why I highlighted them so that they would come to your attention. The other thing that I think is important to note is that under the OPERA money that is available, one of the components of the OPERA money is use of OPERA, which we didn't calculate in here, but it does actually prove to the same point that you're just making. Is one of the areas of use of OPERA money is to take the payroll, the actual payroll on January, I believe it's 27th, and compare that to the current budget. And any positions that are being added would be allowable use, eligible use of the OPERA funding. And when payroll ran those numbers for us, I think there are 28 positions that are currently in this budget in total, which is very close to the number you just indicated, that were not employed with us on January 27.
So that means, if I'm just looking at this, so 60, so we're looking at roughly 20 new positions from FY, and I say "new positions", so if I'm just solely looking at the FY '21 budget to '22, we've got 20 new positions coming on. So we've got, if I go back to the 60.5, we've got 40 vacancies that are just people either left, resigned, or retired.
To some extent, that would be true. I mean, some of them, as you know, are patrol, and the academy is just getting going again. And so a number of them are patrol. Looking at the list, I would assumely say to you, a number of them are firefighters. The city administrator is sitting right here, so that position is being filled at the moment. The assistant corporation counsel has been filled, so we've filled that particular position. Those are the ones I can think of right off the top that have actually been filled. They were obviously on the top of this list. And then, as I just indicated, the counseling on aging, those individuals that were laid off. For the most part, there may be one or two that are not coming back or changing positions, but for the most part, those positions will be staffed. I believe the senior center may have opened last Thursday, and so they are back on the payroll of the city as well.
Okay. Just to go back to the Human Resources Department, I think this actually goes across the board for all payroll, but since we're here, I forgot to ask what the other departments. So just looking at, if I look at page 122, the detail for the payroll, the holiday pay for this department is $2,073,000. Just looking at the FY '21 budget, it's almost double. What's the reasoning behind that?
That's correct. So if you recall, in the City of Florida, the policy is if a holiday falls on a Saturday, the city has generally paid those individuals for that holiday. And if the holiday falls on a Sunday, they receive Sunday off. Monday off, rather. They get Sunday off too, but they receive Monday off. What's happening in next fiscal year is I believe there are three Saturday holidays, or at least two, at least two.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Any further, councillor in seat eight, councillor Pereira?
Yes, I have a question. I know that City Hall was closed for a while, but all of the offices were open when manned by people. I know that during COVID, many offices, I know the clerk's office, that somebody gets COVID and other people have to be out quarantined. Same thing happened in several departments. And my question is, you still had DPW working or DCM working and facilities were still working. What is the money that's going to be used for essential workers' pay? These people are eligible for essential workers' pay or no?
Well, the OPERA money has a component in it with regard to premium pay. I believe that's what you're speaking of. So the premium pay is up to $13 an hour or up to $25,000. The mayor has put together a panel of businessmen, of a city councillor.
Florida City Council will now be called back into order. We adjourned our meeting, or we didn't, we took a brief recess so that our CFO would be able to go get the paperwork. That is before us here this evening. Before this council right now is the status of salary changes as requested, which we've been talking about. In addition to that, we also have vacant positions in the FY '22 budget. So I will turn the floor over to the counselor in seat one, because councilor in seat two, you have no further questions, because you had the floor prior to recess.
No, I yield it, thank you.
Fair enough, thank you.
Council president, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
So I went and printed the worksheets that we have been maintaining. They might be slightly different than what originally got put in your budget on 5/15, because I can see a couple, especially in the first two columns, that might have either gotten reversed or a decision was made by the administration to build it into the budget when it was originally not built into the budget. So this is just a working copy so that you could at least have an idea of what the totals were. I can certainly try to go back and go through each item and update it as we go along for the next few evenings. But just, you know, in case you look at it and one says built in and one says not built in, but ultimately it got built in, those would have been decisions that were made by the administration prior to the submission of this budget on 5/15, May 15.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. Counselor in seat one, Councilor Cadine.
Thank you. Just quickly on the documents that we just received. So the vacancies, there are 60.5 full-time equivalents totaling $3.2 million rounded up. Of the 60.5 or the $3.2 million, how much of these vacancies are new positions to the budget? So they're vacancies because the positions are being added in, as opposed to just vacancies because somebody's no longer in the position?
I can certainly understand that question. I can't answer that. I don't know. I can tell you that if we went, and I guess my next question would be, how do you define new? Because the majority of these positions that were added back in '22, they were actually in the '20 budget and funded, some of which had staffed, they were staffed in '20, and for one reason or another, an individual left. And so then they're currently not being staffed. Some are positions that were not in the '21 budget. I would have to take each budget side by side to determine which positions were not in '21. However, if you look at the tab, I believe it's the tab that says charts, you'll see the comparison of several years' worth of staffing in each of the departments. And you will be able to see, oh yes, that one right there, Mr. Cadine. You will be able to see from that that a lot of them were funded in '20. Were not funded in '21, as I indicated earlier, because of the pandemic and the uncertainty of the revenue, and are being funded again in this particular year. In addition, this was prepared back in the early stages of preparing the budget. And I can tell you by looking at it just briefly, some of them have been filled. So you've got some of these positions that are currently filled, although may not have been when the budget was presented to you. In addition, we have Ms. Curran here tonight to speak about the Health Department and the Counseling on Aging. As you know, the state of emergency has been lifted. And so the senior aides and the senior aide coordinator, those positions are now being refilled. So those people were laid off a year ago, August, and the majority of them are coming back. However, on May 15 or prior to that, obviously, when this budget was actually drafted, those positions would have been vacant and therefore are on this worksheet.
So if I look at page 22, based on the chart that you just referred me to, so if I understand this correctly, so FY '22, the employee count is 841.4. So that's roughly up 20 employees from FY '21. So holding true, that would be 20 new positions added to the budget that weren't there for fiscal year '21. But if we go to '20, I can see that some of those positions were in the FY '20 budget but removed.
And that's why I highlighted them so that they would come to your attention. The other thing that I think is important to note is that under the OPERA money that is available, one of the components of the OPERA money is use of OPERA, which we didn't calculate in here, but it does actually prove to the same point that you're just making, is one of the areas of use of OPERA money is to take the payroll, the actual payroll on January, I believe it's 27, and compare that to the current budget. And any positions that are being added would be allowable use, eligible use of the OPERA funding. And when payroll ran those numbers for us, I think there are 28 positions that are currently in this budget in total, which is very close to the number you just indicated, that were not employed with us on January 27.
So that means, if I'm just looking at this, so 60, so we're looking at roughly 20 new positions from FY, and I say new positions, so if I'm just solely looking at the FY '21 budget to '22, we've got 20 new positions coming on. So we've got, if I go back to the 60.5, we've got 40 vacancies that are just people either left, resigned, or retired.
To some extent, that would be true. I mean, some of them, as you know, are patrol, and the academy is just getting going again. And so a number of them are patrol. Looking at the list, I would assumely say to you, a number of them are firefighters. The city administrator is sitting right here, so that position is being filled at the moment. The assistant corporation counsel has been filled, so we filled that particular position. Those are the ones I can think of right off the top that have actually been filled. They were obviously on the top of this list. And then, as I just indicated, the counseling on aging, those individuals that were laid off. For the most part, there may be one or two that are not coming back or changing positions, but for the most part, those positions will be staffed. I believe the senior center may have opened last Thursday, and so they are back on the payroll of the city as well.
Just to go back to the Human Resource Department, I think this actually goes across the board for all payroll, but since we're here, I forgot to ask with the other departments. So just looking at, if I look at page 122, the detail for the payroll, the holiday pay for this department is $2,073. Just looking at the FY '21 budget, it's almost double.
That's correct.
What's the reasoning behind that?
That's correct. So if you recall, in the city of Florida, the policy is if a holiday falls on a Saturday, the city has generally paid those individuals for that holiday. And if the holiday falls on a Sunday, they receive Sunday off. Monday off, rather. They get Sunday off too, but they receive Monday off. What's happening in next fiscal year is, I believe, there are three Saturday holidays, or at least two, at least two.
Thank you, I yield.
Any further, councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira?
Yes, I have a question. I know that City Hall was closed for a while, but all of the offices were open when manned by people. I know that during COVID, many offices, I know the clerk's office, that somebody gets COVID and other people have to be out quarantined. Same thing happened in several departments. And my question is, you still had DPW working or DCM working and facilities were still working. What is the money that's going to be used for essential workers' pay? These people are eligible for essential workers' pay or no?
Well, the OPERA money has a component in it with regard to premium pay. I believe that's what you're speaking of. So the premium pay is up to $13 an hour or up to $25,000. The mayor has put together a panel of businessmen, of a city councilor, of department heads to review the eligibility and the categories for which you can spend OPERA money in so that we can best utilize those dollars going forward. There are certainly frequently asked questions that have been presented to the government who have responded. The last response, I believe, we received on June 10. And, you know, they're starting to look at what employees are really covered in that calculation. Certainly DPW, I would assume, would be one of them. But at this particular point, with the exception of using lost revenue in the FY '22 budget, the administration has not committed to specific funding of any of the other categories of the $34 million that we've received.
Well, I would, as one council, I could name people that I know in City Hall who got really sick with COVID, but I won't do that because I don't want to violate HIPAA law. But I think that, you know, people who stuck it out and did the job that needed to be done for the community, I would advocate that that premium pay be given to those individuals. Just my five cents, not even two cents, my five cents of advocating on their behalf.
We will take that back to the panel.
And as I look through, you know, the positions here that are vacant, you know, I have to say that some of these positions, an electrician, $55,000. A plumber, $55,000. You're not going to get anybody to work for that. You're not going to get a city engineer for $60,000. They leave us. We had a city engineer, he left $20,000 more 15 minutes away from his house. I know that in Florida River, for some reason, we don't want to pay people. You know, we want to keep the budget as tight as we can, et cetera. But if you pay qualified people to do the job, in the long run, it's beneficial to us. You know, I look at the assistant city planner. I mean, we have one city planner and a clerk in that office. How much can we expect that these individuals are going to do? You know, we've combined positions and done all that, and I don't think that's the way to go. And if we have the availability to increase some of these salaries, to get good people in, I mean, we don't even have a tourism director. New Bedford's got a tourism office. Do we care about arts and culture? That generates economic development. And I think we need to look at that. Sometimes you've got to spend money to make money. But anyone that comes in for any art and cultural activities that are happening in the city, they're going to eat at our local restaurants, they might stay overnight, they might visit other things in our city. I mean, we can't even get the bathrooms open, for crying out loud, at Vicentennial Park, and you've got all these people there. We really need to, you know, look at doing something like that. But with these salaries, people are going to come. You're not going to get a master plumber for $55,000, not going to get an electrician for $55,000. And I know that Tammy's going to need it in facilities, and John's going to need it over at, you know, DCM. But, yes, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Any further human resource, further human resources director questions? Human resources only.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I kind of went off on a little tangent.
It's all right, I let you do it.
But I was directing that to human resource as a question, because how many applications do we get that come in with the pays being what they are? I mean, how long have we tried to get a city administrator?
We're currently having a really, really difficult time with the trade positions, plumbers, electricians, mechanic. I mean, we're in desperate need of an electrician or we're in the police department, and it's, nobody's applying. People are just not applying because they're making $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 more. We're having a difficulty time in the water department, in the water filtration department, attracting people with the licensing that we need. So it's a problem with the trades positions right now. And I honestly believe, like I've had discussions, it's something that we definitely look at, need to look at. These are union positions. I mean, that's where it all starts, is at the table, obviously. But at some point, I think we will need everyone's support here because we can't fill positions.
Mrs. Cuello and Water and whatever, they're down six positions. I know four are on the site, the water site, but somebody had called me about the positions that they saw. Now, does that individual need to pay for their license? Or could we hire somebody? And does the city assist in paying for them to get their license? Or is there something like that, some incentive like that that's given, your provisional?
We do.
This time, have you done that?
We do, and Mr. Ferland and I are actually working with AFSMI. We're coming up with different options right now in order to try to attract some of these individuals, and whether it's, you know, paying for their licenses, giving them X amount of time to be able to acquire these licenses. So we're working on a whole series of things right now. And we're just waiting for the union to get back to us, and hopefully, you know, we'll start, you know, making some progress within the water filtration department.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mrs. Cuello, if you may, just going forward, I know you and I worked years ago about really looking at the budget salary schedule and all that other stuff. If you're telling this council that it is certainly possible that you're unable to attract good talent as a result of the pay, well, then you and Mr. McCoy and Mrs. Sahadi and the mayor need to get into a room, and you need to send over to the city council some salary increases and outline to the city council, not just send it to us, right? But outline to us a presentation of, you have specific departments that need additional resources. Here's why they need additional resources. But I just want to make it clear, that responsibility is going to fall on the executive branch to send it down to us. We can advocate, and as you know, we can advocate all we want about this. We can advocate that we want to get Mr. Hathaway's department, an electrical inspector, at $115,000, because maybe that's what other communities are paying. But I know it's a tremendous amount of work. I know that our ordinance committee is fully prepared to do the work. But we need to hear from you, because I feel like this conversation's had every single year about not being able to attract talent in this community. If we need more money for department heads, we need to hear from the mayor's office and the executive branch about why we need pay increases for those specific departments.
Understood. And like I said, we're working currently with the union, because obviously a lot of collective bargaining, so we have to take it through them. So you will be seeing us coming down in the very near future as a result of some of these conversations that we're having with the union.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that.
But I think we did have, come before us at the ordinance committee, a list of some of the salaries that needed to be adjusted, and there was a lot of discussion there about that. And some, it was more or less, you know, are these people getting a raise? And if they were, what was the raise for? So it has started in ordinance for us to talk about that a little. And part of it was that we were out of ordinance, because as employees, you know, they get a bump up based on whatever the union percentage is, they get that percentage as well. And because those ordinances hadn't been changed over the past few years, they're not to exceed, they were exceeding. So that needs to be checked every year to make sure that people aren't exceeding. But, you know, there was a good talk there. We started talking about it. I think it was, I think it was sent back to the mayor and it's going to come back again. I'm not really sure. Maybe councilor in seat number four can let us know where that's at in the ordinance committee, because I'll remember if we sent it back or we tabled it there. But we did begin to discuss that in the ordinance committee, just to that very point of salaries. So maybe that can be added into that.
And we're working getting also salary data from other communities. I know that, you know, this council always asks for comparable data from other, so we're working on that as well.
And thank you, councilor. So I guess in prior years up until this most recent year, Mrs. Cuello, when we saw increases in collective bargaining, we would then accompany, I think, I believe, a transfer associated with retro pay, because you negotiated a collective bargaining agreement that far exceeded the anticipated budget approved by the legislative body, the city council. So I guess, I guess my request going forward is, if you are, as one of the lead negotiators in collective bargaining, are negotiating AFSMI or patrolmen or fire, and there's retro pay, I would prefer to see a request come down from the administration on, it's going to cost $115,000 to settle these retro, or whatever your discussion is through collective bargaining, because we see the contract, we see the verbiage, we vote on the funding mechanism, but we haven't seen a transfer lately. And I think going forward, I think that's going to benefit all of us, just my opinion. Any further questions for HR?
No.
Thank you very much. Next person is MIS. Ms. Lewis does have, is unavailable to be here. She is available through phone if we need her. I spoke to the mayor about this at length today. Counselors, I'm sure, have questions, so we'll entertain them. If we can't answer them, we'll have the clerks write them down, and we'll have Ms. Lewis respond via email. Councilor Lee?
I'm just, I'm looking at the new budget from my phone here, so just bear with me for a second. For MIS, there was a network administrative position. Sorry if I'm not speaking directly. There was a network administrative position added. Is that position filled already?
That position is not filled, councilor. We have been advertising for months for that particular position to be filled. Initially, that position, as you can see from the one network administrator that we currently have, again, we're talking about a salary that is significantly lower than what the industry is paying for this particular salary. At this particular point, there is some leeway in the budget. So I think there, I allude to that in the description on the other personal costs. I say increase in the base salary currently in ordinance. So currently in ordinance, that position is not to exceed 75. So Ms. Lewis has been trying to support an increase in that particular position, but, or vacant position as it's currently indicated. But as you can see from the budget, if we were to increase that vacant position, then we would have to increase the full position, and then we would have to increase the other individual who has the same title. And so it's somewhat of a snowball effect when you're starting to look at whether or not it is prudent to, you know, bring this particular salary up. So Ms. Lewis and Mrs. Cuello continue to advertise for this position at the amount that you see here within the budget. I believe it's not to exceed 75 in the ordinance, so there may be a point in time when the administration will have to adjust this particular salary in order to fill the particular position. With that in mind, what Ms. Lewis has been doing is using outside consultants, if you will, and outside vendor to do some of the network work within the IT department.
What, I guess, I guess that kind of answers it a little bit, but what deficiencies are occurring without this position being filled?
If Ms. Lewis were to answer that, a lot of deficiencies within the IT department. When you look at the IT department and you look at the fact that we, realistically, with the exception of people who don't work in IT specifically, you're speaking of three individuals besides the director. One is a vacant position and has been. One particular individual may be retiring, so that's a whole other issue. And then you have the director. So it's one of the departments within the city that is really understaffed. And that is one of the reasons why, in particular, that this budget has had, on the expense side of the budget, consultants over the last number of years.
Yeah, because the consultant is the next section that I was looking at, and you have, in the, I have the FY '21 in front of me, as well as the '22 on the phone here. And I'm doing, I'm just looking at comparative prices or costs here. You have projected, the projection area, and also it's the same figure in the revised. You have, I believe, you have 87, yeah, 87.5, right?
That's correct.
And then it goes up to 160.
She's looking for 160 this coming year, because she's unable to fill the permanent position.
Okay. Also, in the calculations in the support section of that. So in the FY '21 column, it states that TCM, and I'd like to know, just for people probably would want to know what these acronyms stand for. TCM and ESS training includes $60,000 for MTIS. That's in the FY '21. So in the paragraph in FY '22, you have the same thing. TCM and ESS training includes, but now it's $140,000 for training. And I just wanted to know what entails an $80,000 increase there.
Again, the question could probably best be answered by Ms. Lewis in terms of the specific increase.
Because that $80,000 almost correlates with the $80,000 increase from the consulting services altogether.
What line are you on?
So this is on page?
128.
128, so.
Consulting services.
And it's on 126 on FY '21, if anyone has that document as well. So the paragraph on the side, the support and calculations paragraph, it says TCM and ESS training includes $60,000 for MTIS in FY '21. Now, in FY '22, it says $140,000, so that's an $80,000 increase. And I'm just, obviously, would like to know, and I'm sure other people would like to know, what entails that increase?
Well, the majority of the increase is another individual being assigned here from TCM.
So it's more people being?
TSM, sorry, MTIS.
So that, so that means that more, that there's more people being trained, so that's why it's an $80,000 increase?
Also, another individual on staff to help us with the networking. So maybe there should have been a comma there. But the $140,000 includes an additional individual from the company to help us with the network.
If we have that additional person with this $140,000, then do we need to fill the position as well, in addition to?
Right, so it certainly makes more sense in every organization to have staff that are your own staff, as opposed to outsourcing these kinds of tasks, if you will. I would suggest to you that in time, that would probably be correct. I don't know that it would be immediate, because you'd be bringing somebody in that wouldn't necessarily know our systems, but might know networking. And again, as I indicated, you know, a minute ago, we may have an individual in this department who may be retiring, and so we're back to potentially having one less staff member.
We could end up in a situation where we pay for this 140 and then still fill the position, and then we're spending on both sides of it, right?
You know, again, every department head in this, in this city, I think, are very conscious of what their department is and very conscious of what their department needs are. And quite frankly, I don't believe there is any department head that you will speak to that just spends money for the sake of spending it. So if Ms., I just don't think they do, I'm sorry. If Ms. Lewis has additional staffing and she doesn't need the need for the outside consultant, I believe that she's very prudent with her budget, and she wouldn't hire or wouldn't have them come in for the additional networking services.
And it's not the accusation, it's just the question.
I understand, but I just want, I just want you to know and the public to know that all of our department heads are very cautious with their spending within their departments. And quite frankly, in particular, Ms. Lewis, she is always looking for a way to save some money in her budget, whether it's in telephone costs, whether it's in postage, or now we're talking about consulting. She's very cautious to be sure that, I mean, some of it is just contractual. So that very next section, contracted services, that service is all quoted out from a particular company, and you can see increases across the board for the city, managed services, the police, and the fire.
Yep.
We don't really have any control over that.
Okay.
So those are contracts that we have with these companies, and like everything else, prices go up, and, you know, their salaries go up, so they've got to pay their help. And then, of course, our contracts go up as a result of that.
The security services went up about, and you correct me where I'm wrong here, but about $25,000 or so?
It did. So this is the area where, if you remember, all of the cyber attacks that everyone's having, the steam shit authority just recently, the city of New Bedford prior to that. This is giving the department the ability to run these kinds of tests, and you can see that in the description.
And there's been improvement based on that.
In order to hopefully not have any cyber attacks on our systems.
Okay. In my last piece, I just wanted to know, because again, I always talk about other, I'm going to say that all the time, I'm going to ask what the other services are. But one thing I noticed, though, is, again, I'm looking at, I'm comparing it to FY '21. I didn't even see the line item for other remote services. Now, I get the remote piece possibly being based on COVID-19, or maybe some of it being based on it. But it says in FY '21 revised, $119,910. It's not in the projection in FY, in the FY '21 document, but I... But I, you know, I don't know if there's a discrepancy there or if maybe it's somewhere else in this document. But it's, that line item's not in here. So I just wanted to know, is that just an extra expense or is that just money moved around at all?
That I would have to get back to you on. I did notice that again this morning when I was relooking at her budget, knowing that she wasn't going to be available this evening. The FY '21 through March 31st, '21 has nothing expended against it. I'm assuming, I think that's the column you're talking about. I'm assuming it's misclassified in another area within her budget. But she too has struggled with staffing in terms of even clerical. And so there may have just been the inability to choose the right account to charge it to. But I will look into that particular line item for you.
All right. I, I don't have any more. I mean, I feel like I could go a little further on this, but I believe that there's, there's some more questions for some of the others. And then maybe I'll come back to it if I need to, so thank you.
Sure. Can I just, while we're, we're talking about this budget, I just want to give kudos to Ms. Lewis and actually our grant writer, as, as we've indicated earlier, what a great job they do. So you'll see on page 130 that the increase in the Munis software, so the maintenance on the Munis software, would have been $368,000 going forward. Both Ms. Lewis and the grant writer worked very diligently on being able to have three years' worth of the software going to the cloud in particular. So we're not dealing with our own upgrades on a regular basis. Because right now, one of the individuals works all hours of the night doing the upgrades so that when all of us come to work the following morning, the upgrades are in the system, we will be going to the cloud. But what's even more important than that is that the CARES money is going to cover three years' worth of the Munis. So you see the subtract at the bottom. So, I mean, I wanted to be sure that you still saw what our licensing was for. But you'll actually see a reduction in this particular budget for three years on her particular line item for the Munis maintenance agreements. That's an annual agreement.
I yield the floor.
To Counselor Lee's point, though, I, I know there was discussion about outside or remote services in last year's fiscal budget. Wasn't a lot of our money through CARES Act used because of the remote services? Because that's, that was an eligible expense. So are you going to be seeing a lot of turnover in that department? Because I'm sure there was a number of expenses that were used as a COVID-related expense in MIS.
A lot of what was used under the CARES, and again, I don't have that chart with me this evening that I've presented to this council in the past. But a lot of it was the purchase of laptops and remote computer equipment that, quite frankly, the city hadn't purchased in the past. We had very few laptops across the departments within city government. And when COVID hit and the state of emergency existed and there were staff that needed to work from home, Ms. Lewis used both CARES money as well as DOJ money that was awarded to the city to shore up all of the city departments with the proper equipment. So that could be everything from a laptop and those equipments that, that equipment that you actually see to things like switches or other things that control our ability to work remotely.
Thank you. Counselors, Councilman Seate, Counselor Perera?
The question that I have, or the comment that I'll make about this, is I know that there's money for broadband. And I think making sure, I don't think you spent a lot, but I think more money needs to be looked at, making sure that we are not going to get cyber attacks because that is a huge problem in some communities. And the other thing is, I have talked to, to Mr. Lewis about the whole computer system in City Hall because I think that our website could be a little better. I, I don't think that our website is user-friendly. And sometimes, you know, I'll be at the clerk's office and they're trying to get on the computer and they can't get on, that we need to spend some money to get a better connection. And I know that there was a team put together to look at that of people who are in the field of computers. And because of COVID, that kind of got slowed down. But the other thing is, if department heads don't send information to the MIS department, it's not going to get on the website. I mean, our website, where is our calendar of events of everything that's happening around the city or, you know, different issues that arise to make people aware that this street is going to be worked on? I mean, I just think it needs to be a little bit more user-friendly, a little bit more interactive. And I know that, you know, just Mrs. Lewis being there, even for the salary that she makes. I mean, I have a niece that graduated from one of the Boston colleges, Northeastern or something. And she's, got her master's in computer software. I mean, she makes book of books and, you know, works from home. And this, running all of this is not an easy thing for her. And I would hope that we would be able to at least fill that position and work a little bit on it.
Counselor, if I may, it's, you know, I had a lot of time with Ms. Lewis, probably predominantly with her. And if I had to divvy up the pie and also Mr. Furlan and whatnot, it's $65,000. I think you're, and where you're going, the comment you just made about your niece, I think the closest, the person she was closest to hiring ended up at $85,000 or $90,000 and, as you just said, working at home.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping after this is done, we could, because it is utterly amazing that, again, with the cyber attacks, ransomware and whatnot, you know, we've had Mr. Walton who, for years, and obviously I have a prior relationship with him when I was purchasing agent, working on Munis and whatnot, who's fantastic. Everyone she has is fantastic. But it is, and I think Counselor Lee, you were alluding to this, it is as crucial, just in, and again, a different sphere, it is as crucial as Mr. Furlan's problem at water filtration. It really is, all right? It's, it's sad, the IT department, they're all tremendous workers. But again, they're, they're clearly, you know, understaffed there. They could arguably use three more folks. Because you have everybody in City Hall, right? And I, I think you and I have some similarities here. Everybody's technically challenged in one way or another. So even the.
I'm not technically challenged, I have grandchildren.
There you go. So we have, so again, so Mason is like a nephew to me. I mean, if something goes down or a Zoom goes down or whatever, they're running all over the building. Never mind dealing with the backup and the Munis and the cybersecurity and all this other, and all this other stuff.
I'm just really concerned with cybersecurity because somebody can get in and, you know, maybe change things or at least know a lot of people's personal information. So we, and I know from talking to city councils in New Bedford when that happened there. And then they wanted to, whoever had taken it under siege or whatever, wanted like a couple of million dollars from New Bedford to release it. It was, it was pretty crazy. I just don't want to see that happen to us. And I think security, security is all over. How many of us have cameras all around our house? You know, when I was a kid, you, you left your door unlocked. So it's just the world we live in, unfortunately. I wish that we could just all be kind to one another and not rob from one another. And that's not the world we live in. But, I mean, I think she works really hard. And, you know, she said if people give it to me, I can put it on, on the website. So she's willing to work and, you know.
That's been another topic of discussion. And as you know, we've had MTSI for years, they were here when I was here. But again, they've, talk about a necessary outside contractor, their assistants. And again, in speaking to Ms. Lewis, I mean, I can't speak to the technical aspect, but they're vital.
And I don't know if the money we're spending on outside is equivalent to hiring one or two people. I don't think so by here, you know. So, but the security is a big concern of mine. With that, I yield, thank you.
Any other questions on MIS? Councilman Seate, one, Counselor Kedine?
Thank you. Just to, if you guys piggyback on Counselor Lee's line of questioning, with regard to the network manager and then the increase on technical consulting services, Counselor had asked whether it made more sense to, or whether or not we were just duplicating the costs and if it made once, if it made more sense to go one way or the other. So I guess I would, I would ask as to whether or not, if it makes more sense that since we've already got an increase of close to $80,000 built into the consulting services to have MTIS just provide a network, what do we call them, network manager?
Administrator.
Administrator? I know we're constantly talking about not being able to be competitive with salaries. Clearly, they have employees where they can compete with, with the market and obviously have different profit margins that go into it. So they're able to offset some of this. And then the other piece to it is if we have MTIS provide the services for us, for the network administrator, that reduces our cost for training, our, you know, collective bargaining, our benefits, healthcare, fringe benefits that we, we need to pay. And we rely solely on them who, who already have an understanding and knowledge of our, our systems that we use here.
I believe, and I could be incorrect, so I will certainly do the research, but I believe they were charging us $60,000 for a half-year, half-time person. And that person came, was not necessarily in the building all the time, was not able to answer questions all the time. But they were the equivalent of a part-time individual. So the, the charge for using MTIS is significantly more than I'm a salaried individual that would be here on staff all the time.
Right, but I guess my line of questioning is if we already have somebody who is a network MIS individual, we have a director who I'm assuming has an understanding. Actually, we've got two network MIS individuals.
So as you know, one of them is strictly, for the most part, Munis. And the other one would be strictly the network itself.
Have we looked at doing, I guess, a cost sharing with the school department and their IT to potentially save some money? And then potentially do maybe the consulting portion of that?
I don't believe so.
Because I mean, with the school department, I know they've got, they've got some employees over there. And it may make more sense if there was a strategy to, to offset, even if it was just, you know, a couple of days, plus the fact that we would have a, a part-time network administrator to come in. So if we have somebody who's part-time and, you know, they come in two full, two full days of the week, we still have somebody that's here. And then we can also rely on the school department.
We can certainly look into that as, as a viable option.
My other question was on page 129. Municipal collection services, the deputy collector. Why the increase of $22,000 for the deputy collector?
I would have to ask Ms. Lewis for the specifics.
Has anything changed in terms of collection that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Page 132, copier equipment mailroom, $45,000 increase. Is that just solely contractual increases?
Yes, a lot of it's contractual. And I believe a lot of it is overruns, the copy counts that are in some of the machines. I know Ms. Lewis is keeping very specific detail records of the departments in particular that are going over the copy count.
And then just capital line. So between what we're using for the software that's coming out of the CARES money and then the capital item, is that in addition to what we saw on page 130 and 131?
Yes, this would be the switches that would be eligible under the CARES money. And the other would be the software itself going to the cloud.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? I should have said on the onset, but it was, it was overlooked on my part. We are going to try to end these meetings at between 9:00 and 9:15, unless the city council waives the rules and wants to continue on any given night. That will take place starting tonight, tomorrow, and into next week. So just so counselors are aware of that. The next department is, I'm going to ask that we do page 103 in the elections department so that, is there any questions on elections? I'm sorry to jump to general government at this point, but I would like to get our elections clerk out if there's no questions on elections.
The only thing that's changed here on elections is the request to fill a vacancy or to add a vacancy, again, a position that was in a prior budget. The senior aide at halftime is put back into this budget at an annual salary of $13,757.
I, I, can we get a very brief update on the updated? I know we, Counselor Joe Kamauer, I think it was him, who filed a resolution a couple of times ago about upgrading our elections equipment? Is that?
Oh, yeah, that's been.
That's been done, that was started last year.
That was 2019.
That was 19, that was, oh, sorry, it was Counselor Kilby. I'm sorry. It was Counselor Kilby. Okay, so we have seen, is there any other infrastructure needs that you see?
No, we just did new booths and new equipment for 2019, so.
Are you struggling to find help on election days still, or?
Actually, for 2000, for the last election, no. We, we actually did a really good job getting, because we had to get a lot of extra help because we had to advance process ballots. We had people mailing, helping with the mail-ins, helping put the actual postcards that the state had given us into the system to create mailing lists. And so, I mean, we, we pretty, we did a pretty good job this time. But we do have a lot of new things that the state requires us to do. One thing that we're doing now is automatic voter registration. So when they go to the registry, so we, we used to have about 35 a day for people that went to the registry registered to vote. Now we're up to about 135. Today was 135, and that's per day. So I have one clerk that pretty much all day works on that because she, you have to go into each individual file in order to approve or reject the actual record of this person because it could be a duplicate, but we don't know that until we go into the file. So that's, it takes her pretty much the whole day just, just to process, just to process that. And then I have another clerk in the office that kind of picks up the slack. So now I'm still out there doing a lot of the clerk work where, like I said in my notes, that a lot of the commission stuff or department head stuff ends up falling to the wayside until I can get to it because I'm working on clerk stuff. So, yeah, I did do a request for a part-time person. A lot of the other stuff, filing, answering phones, going to the counter, just normal stuff. And then during election time, this person will help us more on election day with the public testing that we do, calling poll workers, making sure every, all the poll workers. Now we have to do W4s and I9s for everything. Make sure they have all their paperwork in order. So that's why my request is for part-time in there. We did have one in there at one point, and then we made her a full-time clerk. So I'm still missing the part-time because we had at one point, I think, like four full-time clerks in there. And now we're down to, we just got one more. Well, we just upgraded her from part-time to full-time.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Seate, Counselor Perera?
But didn't you have someone from the council on aging working there?
We did have CFC. We did have somebody from CFC. And she complained that she didn't have parking, that she had to pay for the parking. So CFC said until we can find some way to pay for their parking, they were not going to send anybody else to see it, to, for us.
Wow.
Yeah. That was probably about three years ago. That was the last one we had in there. Liz was still, Liz was still there when the last CFC help left.
But it's true. If you're going to pay for parking, what you made through CFC to come in part-time.
They do 20 hours a week at minimum wage.
So, and if you're going to pay to park and you're, you're working to pay your parking. And we couldn't find a parking place for her? Was that ever brought up? I mean, are there other parking places available? Mr. McGoye, that might something, because we can get an additional set of hands to help out.
And CFC actually paid for it.
And CFC will pay, let's find a parking space. That might be something to look into, just to get an extra set of hands. That might be something to look into, just to get an extra set of hands, especially around election time. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. So nice to see you. I just have one question. The part-time clerk that you're talking about, is that the one under here that says vacancy senior aide?
Yes.
So, but it's not necessarily a senior aide?
Not necessarily a senior aide. It's just a part-time, 19 hours a week.
Okay. All right. I yield. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. All right, is purchasing, purchasing, this is here? Mrs. Sahadi, want to give a brief overview on purchasing, please?
Certainly.
Why don't we hold off on that? We've got department heads here, so since there's nobody in the purchasing department. Oh, she is here, okay. Sorry, I was trying to get department heads out of here. Purchasing is in our Under Administrative Services, last page. Any questions on purchasing? Councilor in seat two, Councilor LeDionne.
I guess my, my questions are more in terms of logistics, I guess I would call them. I'm having a difficult time understanding how any individual in this world can work two full-time jobs and one part-time job and be able to balance that. You are a project manager, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You are the interim director?
Yes.
And you are the part-time purchasing agent?
Yes.
So I have difficulty with that, in honesty. That's a lot of work, that's a lot of positions. And I wasn't even going to address you. I thought I was only going to address Mrs. Sahadi, or the administration, whatever, however you want to put it. I don't know how, and I guess I will, I don't know how somebody can be, wear three hats, be their own boss. It just seems like such a conflict and so difficult for one person to do all of that.
I understand. So, and we're very fortunate, really, that Tammy stepped up and took on the tasks of Mr. Gallagher when he left us. Certainly, during that period of time, initially, the administration agreed to pay her some service out of rank, if you will, so that she could generally keep the department together. In the meantime, MSBA required, because of the Durfee High School, that somebody be appointed as the director. So, she, like Mr. McCoy, has a 90-day appointment in that particular position. That position certainly has been advertised, so the director's position has been advertised on MMA, and I'm not sure Mrs. Coelho left. I don't know if it's advertised anyplace else. I know it was advertised on MMA. At some point, the mayor will need to sit down and determine what he wants to do with that particular department and division, because you are correct. If she were going to be the director long-term, then we need to find somebody for the project manager's position. I mean, we can't burn people out. It certainly, people are willing, and I said this a minute ago, with regard to our department heads and managing the budget, they're all willing, all of our department heads are all willing to step up and do what is necessary to get the jobs done. But ultimately, going back to something that you and I have spoken about, and that's the purchasing agent aspect and the director's aspect. I mean, it's one thing when you are the project manager and the purchasing agent, because there are a lot of positions that are combined across the Commonwealth for efficiency purposes. But when you are the department head and the purchasing agent, and you're really in charge of some of the major projects within the city, I could see where at least the appearance of a conflict would necessarily exist. But at the moment, it's temporary. The mayor will need to sit down with, you know, Mr. McCoy, and Tammy, and myself, and maybe Mrs. Coelho, and really look at the positions. I have a feeling, based on, you know, all that we know about the staffing and the salary ranges that we have for a lot of these individuals, I don't know that we got many applicants for a position. And then, if the mayor were to, you know, make some decisions about those departments, then her current position, right, the project manager position, would then become available to be filled. So, it's still a department, or a division, actually, in this case, it's a department, because facilities management stands alone, that is going to need some change going forward, you know, as of the preparation of this budget. You know, that change is really unknown and uncertain, but, you know, the mayor is working on it. And right now, we're just thankful that Tammy was able to step up and do what she needed to do, so we can keep the Durfee project on task.
Yeah, I can understand. That does put us in a predicament. Then there's nobody that could, on a temporary basis as well, step up into her, into her
Purchasing.
project manager position to make life easier, or to, I'm sure, I mean, being the director has to take a lot of time, I would assume.
It all does. It all takes a lot of time. But to step up into my project manager role at this point, where we're so close to opening Durfee, I mean, I've been involved with the Durfee project and all our other MSBA projects going on. We have four other schools that are going on right now as well, that we're just about wrapping up. You know, I'm very knowledgeable of the whole project. I've been there since the inception of the school building committee. So for someone to come in, at this point, we did hire a consultant to kind of offset that role a little bit for me, which helps tremendously, to get us through to the end. We're just so close to the end. To try to catch somebody up at that speed at this time would be impossible, and it would just be, like, very wasteful of time.
And in this particular department, we have no other non-union employees. So we're back to, you know, slim departments with not a lot of staffing. So it's not like we have another individual that's a non-union employee that could step up into the project manager's position.
Yeah, and I am aware.
Even if that were temporary.
And I am aware also, like some other departments, there is, you know, certain certifications and requirements, et cetera, that are necessary to even perform the duties of the different positions. And we don't always have that many trained people on board, so I know that makes it also difficult. All right, well, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I yield. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. Purchasing, we used to have two girls there. She needed another one. You do it part-time. So that's a good thing. And she was always looking for extra help, but you're taking care of that. And I know you follow Chris Gallagher and all the projects that he's been doing. And we sat down last week when you were in the City Hall to talk about the projects, and you're right up the snuff on all of them, the gates with the electric and the school and all the other school projects. And I think you're doing a fine job.
Thank you.
And during the pandemic, you were here all the time as well. And you could be here at 7:00 in the morning, and you'd probably be here at 8:00 o'clock at night, and never complain. You've done the job. In fact, I think anybody can do the job, but you, I see you do a lot of work, and to me, you're the one. I don't think we should have to go out and look for anybody else. You've got somebody with experience, you've got a first-hand with Mr. Gallagher. Unfortunately, he's gone. And I think you're the one that can do that job. You feel comfortable doing that job right now?
Yes, sir.
You do? And to me, it's a no-brainer. I think we should give the mayor, let him know, a good wicker. She's on it. I think she can do it, and no hesitation. And I think you're the one. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
And I think you have to look at all of the certifications that Tammy has, and, you know, the educational background that she has for the positions that she has as well. But as far as the high school being on the building, the high school building committee, and Tammy's there too at all the meetings, but also Becca Collins is going by there, who's contractor, and also on the building committee. She goes by there every morning, every day.
She's the consultant I was referring to.
Yeah, checking it out and making sure that things are being done, and it's right towards the end.
Right.
So now, what are we looking at? We're looking at, after coming up with a punch list, that we've had a punch list on every single project, that every school project, there's always a punch list of things to do. But it's right on target, and be, you know, be opening soon to stop moving furniture and moving things in. That's one of the big things with that project.
And we have a very good relationship, Becca and
Yeah, she's good.
and I. So she does keep me, you know, up to date on a lot of things, and we do walkthroughs. We stay in touch.
And that's a good team. Good team to get things done. I think you're doing a great job, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat one, Councilor Cadine.
Thank you. I guess my first question, that might not be budget-related, but, so you mentioned that we hired a consultant, so Rebecca Collins is the consultant. Isn't she also serving on the building committee?
I, Tammy can answer that?
Yes.
I believe she is, yeah.
Should I ask the question?
So, can I, you can ask the question, Councilor. You're not restricted to asking any questions.
Okay. Is there a conflict of interest that we've got somebody serving on the building committee, and there's also a consultant to the project itself? I don't want to offend anybody, but.
I'm not sure, but I think she took a leave. I think she took a leave from it, but I'm not 100% sure, because she wasn't at the last meeting that I was at.
Mr. McCoy, you don't happen to know this, do you?
So I don't know.
I do not know if she took a leave.
But even if she took a leave, though, just perception, if you've got somebody serving on a building committee, the building project's not over, but we hire somebody to be a consultant?
Well, someone, I mean, the building committee is also volunteer. I mean, it's not like they
But they
It's not like she sold herself out to look for money.
No, no, no.
I believe this was only after Mr. Gallagher.
But the building committee has the authority, sole authority, to approve all purchase orders. They have fiduciary responsibility for the project, to oversee the project. And now you're saying that somebody who has taken that oath to make sure that there was a checks and balances to pay all the bills and stuff like that, is now then receiving some type of payment, right, to consult for the city on the Durfee building project? Am I the only one that sees this?
So, no, Councilor, certainly not. It's a valid point. So, I think it'd be very, very appropriate, Mrs. Sahadi, if you could, and Mr. McCoy, rather, if you could please look into that by tomorrow morning and update this council on that, because of the possible conflict of interest and any possible issues that we may or may not see from secondary education as well, who's overseeing, giving, I'm sorry, MSBA, who's giving us a large portion of that project.
Mr. President.
And I can't say, obviously, I have no idea if she has reached out for any sort of an opinion, but we will look into it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So just, I guess, to stay on the same line of questioning that Councilor in seat two had asked, you know, and I know we're dealing with purchasing itself, but several years ago, the administration came back before us to separate facilities and grounds from community services. Then at that point, we were told that we need to put in a project manager, because we had all these projects. The council asked, and I specifically asked, is this sustainable? Is this a position that is absolutely needed? Because we've got a number of projects going on, is this truly a full-time position? Because one thing I didn't want to do was add a position just to lay somebody off when these projects are done. We were told it's a full-time position, that we absolutely need to have it, because Mr. Gallagher did not have enough time to oversee all these projects. Mr. McCoy was here as the purchasing agent. He had two staffs, two additional clerical people under you?
Correct, an assistant and a clerk.
With all the purchasing that goes on for a $350 million project?
Budget.
Budget, I'm sorry. So then we just, to Councilor in seat two's point, we consolidate. So the position that was an absolute necessary to be able to oversee all these projects, because a department head could not do it, was sustainable throughout the years, and it wasn't just specific to any one project. We minimize a department, and we throw it onto this individual, or this individual steps up and takes it. What I'm missing is, why have we been paying a project manager, or why were we told that a project manager is needed, and all their responsibilities that they had was a full-time position? So if you tell me it's a full-time position, and you want to take something else on that, that's one thing. But the individual before us took on the purchasing department, is taking that on part-time. So essentially, we have a head clerk that's running the entire department by herself, and on a part-time basis, we have the individual before us that's somehow filling in, but also doing what we were told is at least a 40-hour job, if not more, in a project manager. And if that wasn't enough, she's also doing, to Councilor in seat two's point, the position of the director of facilities.
Which is temporary.
Call it what, I get it, I get it. Call it what you want.
I stepped up to, you know, so we could carry on.
And this is not, this is not any, I know you're at the table. This is not directed towards you. It's directed towards the administration. From my standpoint, I'm told that we absolutely needed director of facilities. That's why we moved it from community maintenance. We absolutely needed a project manager. And purchasing, I know how busy purchasing is. I don't know how you can combine those three departments into one individual. It doesn't make sense to me.
Can I interject?
Councilor in seat three, your point of information?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Cadine, Councilor Pereira. So, has the job been advertised at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
MMA, you said, and possibly online, right. I did see it at the MMA website, by the way.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's probably on our website. And I'm not sure, Mrs. Coelho uses Indeed from time to time, when she doesn't get a lot of applicants, so I'm not sure if she's advertised there as well.
Okay. Well, that was my question. Ms. Councilor Cadine, still on the floor.
So, I guess, oh, I'm sorry.
I will say that I think this was somewhat of an emergency situation, that obviously we did not anticipate it was going to happen. And you definitely stepped up to the plate here. And I think we have to, whoever we hire, you, or, you know, wherever we, this has to happen sooner than later, as Councilor Dan stated, because I, for one, do not want to take advantage of employees. I mean.
So let me revert back to the purchasing agent.
Tammy, if you could just step up a little to the microphone, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
So, as far as purchasing goes, I've been able to streamline a lot of the work. A majority of it was not electronic when I got there. When I took it over, they were still using the same forms, the manual forms, that I used when I was there in 1990. So, I started out in purchasing. I did five years there. I came in through civil service, and I've just kind of done full circles, and that's where I'll hopefully end my career as well. But I've been able to streamline a lot. I've been able to teach that clerk a lot of Microsoft Office skills that she did not have.
No, I get it. So I'm sure you're
So, you know, we have streamlined
But that doesn't make it fair.
Well, I know.
It doesn't make it fair to you, or to the clerk in the purchasing department. I think that was Councilor Cadine's line of questioning, you know, and Councilor Dan as well. It's a matter of fairness for me. So, I hope the administration moves on this quickly, and people, you know, get the salary that they deserve. And again, once I'll repeat, once again, I think this is an emergency situation.
Yes, sir.
We're trying to adapt to it, but I would urge the administrators to move quick on it. So, thank you for, Councilor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cadine.
So, just going back, I mean, so, something's got to give. Either the, either the project manager's not a full-time position, or purchasing's not a full-time position, but I can tell you, I'm familiar with purchasing, and city our size, I don't know that you have one person handling all of the purchasing that's going on. I just don't see it. And what we have here is, there's no, at least as the budget's presented, there's no intent to get another full-time purchasing agent in this position, even though there's two people listed both at full-time equivalents. I would say that it's really one and a half, and we've got, you know, obviously, the individual that's before us is a purchasing agent making just under $10,000, and I think we're looking to increase that, I guess, stipend salary, whatever we want to call it, by roughly 10,000. whatever we want to call it, by roughly $10,000 to bring it up to $20,000. But, I mean, am I missing something? Is purchasing, the purchasing agent really a part-time position?
Well, I think, again, Tammy did describe a lot of the new controls and procedures that she's put in place. I think to some extent, what we're trying to do with the union and Mrs. Cuello is allow some of the other staff members that are clerks in facilities, and you can speak probably more to this, but to be able to do or share some of these tasks. So although we do have one individual that has been assigned to purchasing for quite some time, we have a couple of additional clerks, if you will, and they have titles, but clerks in the Facilities Department that are helping with some of this day-to-day activity. And I think the biggest thing, though, is to look at where the purchasing department has come over the last couple of years since Tammy's been in that particular position. We are totally electronic now. We've got department heads that are not filling out paper anymore, that are submitting their information electronically. We've got, you know, school departments submitting stuff electronically to the purchasing agent for approval and submission, whether it's the bidding process or the quoting. And obviously, Tammy can speak a lot more to those improvements in that department. So to answer your question, I'm not sure that the city, particularly with the way it's now established that we need a full-time purchasing agent, as long as the purchasing agent has the sufficient support staff, because a lot of it is the support staff that needs to help with regard to the day-to-day activities. And then, you know, we've already talked about facilities and the project manager versus the director.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, you know, the efficiencies in electronic filing and submittals, but it still doesn't take away all the, you know, the responsibilities and the requirements that come with Chapter 30B, 149, 30, 39M, you know, in terms of documentation, advertising, bid solicitations, the writing of the bids, making sure department heads are following. I mean, we've got a number of department heads, you know, between police, fire, you know, community maintenance, schools. I don't know. I mean, I'd venture to say, when we talk about comparative analysis and we compare ourselves to other communities, I don't know that a municipality our size is, you know, has one and a half FTEs for purchasing. And if they do, I would venture to say, and I guess this will be my next question, that you've got, you know, directors of community maintenance who are certified as MCPPO, or you've got other department heads that holds a similar certification with regards to purchasing that are able to, you know, fill in, but, I don't know. To me, it doesn't make sense when we have these conversations and we're saying that this position's a full-time position, this position was a full-time position, you know, and we're still able to throw another, a third full-time position, even if it's only temporary, onto a single individual. With that, I yield.
Any other questions for purchasing? Councilman, seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Mrs. Sahadi, this is on page 141. Salaries and wages permanent. It's 47, 975. And if you look under the payroll details, it's close to that, the annual salary is minus the, we're not including the long journey and holiday. However, under other personnel costs, you have 10,800 and it says, increase in procurement agent salary from 9,000 to 10,000. So if that procurement salary is already included in the 47, 975 and we're adding 10,800, but we're only increasing her 1,000, why is that? It doesn't make sense to me. And I'm looking on the salary change request.
That is a typo. It should be 9,000 to 20.
What page, Counselor?
On 141. It should be 9,000 to 20. I apologize.
So we're increasing the purchasing agent salary from 9,000 to 20,000?
That was the request of the individual. The mayor has not made that decision, but again, we are trying to fund all of these departments appropriately. So if and when the decision is made by the mayor, the appropriate funding is in the departments themselves.
So then my other question is, under purchasing payroll details, under fiscal year, under the details, this is without any increase in it? But isn't it usually have the increase in it?
Well, in this particular year, as I indicated as we started tonight's meeting, the other purchase, personnel costs are used for any increases that have either been asked for or that were in the process of negotiating that have not been granted. So whether it be a contract that expires on January 1st, and so the mayor would have the opportunity to increase that particular position, or in this particular case, this is not a contract employee, but the request was asked of the mayor to increase this particular salary and as he determines how to restructure the three jobs that she currently has, meaning the project manager and the director position in particular, not necessarily this one, the mayor will consider the request to increase her salary from the 9,000 to the 20.
Okay. So then, looking at this status salary change request, the first column, it says built into the budget, the second, not in the budget. So even though you have this 10,800 in the total on page 141 of the 60,148 total, it's actually not built into the budget on the individual salary page.
Right. So I explained this to Council President when I gave him this worksheet, as I, you know, was asked to go back and get it. What we did at the end was put them all into the budget as other personal costs and didn't maintain the difference between the built into the budget of 80,000 and the not built in of 61, with the concern, of course, that some of those particular contracts would be expiring and would need to be funded in the budget. And you can look down the list and see some of them that I'm speaking of specifically.
Okay. So then my last question is, in the salary chart that's in ordinance, under purchasing agent, current salary, obviously, it says it's included with Tammy, however, we're still looking to, the current in ordinance is not to exceed 67, we're still looking to change the ceiling on that to 77.5, even though we don't have a full-time person doing that job?
So that's correct, Counselor. So there's a not to exceed. So if, in fact, something occurred, as Counselor in seat one indicated, and we needed to revert to a full-time purchasing agent, the ordinance would be not to exceed a salary that would be sufficient to hire someone, hopefully, that would take the job in the City of Fall River for some salary not to exceed that particular amount.
Okay. I mean, I think she's just proven that we don't need a full-time person and she's looking to go from 9,000 to 20 for doing the job, but we're going to put it in here as a full-time job not to exceed 77.5.
Well, it's been in ordinance as a full-time position.
I understand that, but it just seems silly that we'd even be increasing it when we know that someone's doing the job part-time, unless she's missing three quarters of her responsibilities, which I have not heard that she's doing. So, anyway. And to Council President, to answer your question, the salary schedule, I know that Councilman, seat eight, asked it, she's on the ordinance committee. It was requested that the administration send down at least a commitment to put in a step schedule for these positions so that there wouldn't be people being paid by who you know and take the politics out of it. When it was sent back to us, it put on our agenda twice. It did not come down with that. At the last meeting, we asked Madam Clerk to send another letter asking for it. Mrs. Sahadi indicated that that would take about a year to do comparisons to other cities and towns, or, I'm sorry, other like cities to Fall River. But alls we were looking for was a commitment, since it was a vote, a full vote of the ordinance to get that from them. So that's on our agenda, again, the ordinance committee on the 21st.
Thank you, Counselor.
With that, I yield.
Councilman, seat two, Councilor Deion.
Yeah, I just have one more question. With the additional work, is she being compensated for the extra work? Is there a stipend involved?
She's been paying, she's being paid service out of rank right now. That is correct.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Any other questions, Councilman, seat?
Six.
Six, Councilman.
All right. To go back a little bit and to touch upon Ms. Collins, what was asked specifically for you to obtain, Ms. Sahadi, for us?
Whether Ms. Collins, whether there's a conflict of interest that she is both a consultant on the Durfee High School project as well as on the Building Committee.
Okay. Do we know, is it a paid consultant position?
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible, along with that information, to obtain the date that she was hired as a consultant on behalf of the City of Fall River? And would that have to go out for bid?
30B people.
I'll talk to the city administrator.
Again, I don't know, I don't know what she's even being paid. I mean, certainly, under 10,000, she's not, you know, there would be no requirement. It's, you know, so again, I'd have to, also, you have the situation of exemptions, but again, under 10,000 total, you don't need any kind, it's sound business practice. You don't need to advertise and have competition and whatnot.
All right. So for transparency...
Again, I have no idea what she's getting paid. I'll find out.
Because it got brought up just...
The data holder.
Yeah, please.
And the consultant position is being paid. You're not paid to be on the Building Committee.
Okay.
And it's no vote.
Okay. My, I would just like to see the date of, that she was hired as a consultant, what she's being paid by the City of Fall River as a consultant, and again, to touch upon what Counselor Kadeem said, whether or not it's a conflict of interest.
We will find out this out for you for tomorrow evening.
Thank you. Mr. President, I yield with that. Thank you.
Anything further from the council on purchasing? Harry, none. Thank you very much. What I'd like, that was going to conclude, with the exception of law, the administrative services component to our budget. At this point, I would like to, before we go to some of the other department heads, I know Mr. Ferland is here. Mr. Ferland is away tomorrow, so since it's 8:30 already and we have it agreed upon time at 9:00, 9:15 to leave, I'd like to invite Mr. Ferland down first. I apologize to the additional department heads. You are here tomorrow?
Yeah.
I thought you said you were here tomorrow.
Next week.
Oh, next week. Never mind. Yeah, I'm going to take some other people. You have a lot of questions. Just regard my statement.
About face.
I thought it was, from my understanding, I thought that was tomorrow, Mr. Ferland. Thank you. I'm just trying to get you out, but you are going to stay.
Can we take veterans? That'll be quicker.
Yeah, Mr. Hague, veterans, please. Mr. Hague. Any questions? Yep. Councilman, seat two, Councilor Deion.
So veterans, while Mr. Hague is making his way down here, veterans is on page 111 and 112. That is one of the amendments that you did receive this evening. There was a position or a movement of employees within this department and inadvertently, the vacant position was eliminated from the position, from the budget. And so Mr. Hague brought that to the administration's attention when he reviewed his budget and we included it back in. And it was just that the head clerk went to a clerk and the senior clerk and then the head administrative clerk, and then somehow, the one vacant position was inadvertently left off. But we have since added that back into his budget.
So essentially, we have seven positions versus six.
And one of them is the part-time. So we're really talking about the six, six? Yes, six. Six positions because the, Mr. Farias, who is the grave officer, is, you know, part-time with the $300 stipend.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to count them myself. Did I count wrong?
So basically, I don't really have any questions. You've always done a great job. You've always been very thorough and meticulous and, I mean, you've just always run, you've always run your department exceptionally well. Basically, I just want to wish you well and congratulate you on your upcoming retirement. Thank you for your service. And maybe if you could enlighten someone who may be interested in taking the reins, if that's something we could do, I don't know, just as far as requirements and if somebody would want to apply, how they would go about it, what they would do, I would appreciate that and I think it would be good for the public to know. Again, thank you very much for what you've done.
Oh, thank you, Counselor, and we are doing that right now, looking into the field of certified and experienced VSOs. Hopefully, someone will come to work in Fall River. But if that's not the case, I'm a case in point, you can make a VSO out of anybody. So, I mean, before I did that, I was a city councilor, so, you know, it was one of those switches that went to hot. Counselor's laughing at me because he knows I'm being a little flip. So if we can't find somebody that's experienced, we will. I committed to the administration that I would spend some time seeing that through. So I may be around a little bit, you know, for the next few months, but it's something I enjoy doing and I want to see the Fall River have the, you know, the best veteran services because that's what we're noted for.
Yep, I agree with you 100%. And I think I just also wanted to bring it up because we do have people that watch these meetings that probably have, are totally unaware that the position is going to be open, that you're retiring, and maybe people who have thought about it in the past, and this would just be an avenue for them to be aware and in case somebody wants to step forward.
Yeah. I believe it'll follow the same course as the other positions you heard about this evening and how they go about going to, is it MAS, MIS?
MMA.
MMA.
That's okay.
There's a lot of places, yeah, there's a lot of places to go and we've been talking to the veterans community and we want to get a good fit because there's a lot of things involved. The veterans, they have needs and things such as that, so we want to make sure that we have someone that can fill that.
And somebody who will offer true commitment.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I want to just take this moment, Mr. Hague, to wish you well. I know councils have questions to wish you well in your retirement. You and I go back a really long time, I think, from your days serving on the city council and I always admired your leadership abilities and you holding people accountable in the way you did. My grandmother was in the clerk's office when you were a city councilor and I appreciate everything that you've done for this community and then in your continued commitment when you became a veterans' agent. So I want to just commend you for your work and thank you for the services that you have provided and continue to provide this community. And I know the job is challenging that you have to do, but you did it with ease and professionalism and courage and commitment and I think this entire community and council is grateful for the work that you've done and the services that you provide this city over the years. So I just wanted to thank you personally for that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman, seat three, Councilor Kilby.
Yes, well said, Mr. President. So I felt compelled to say something to you, Ray. You were actually a great city councilor. I sat on the side with you for about six years, so...
It was fun sitting next to you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Seat number five. We had some good evenings.
Oh, yeah. I learned a lot from you. So congratulations on your retirement. I'm sure Kathy's very excited. And also, congratulations, obviously, on outstanding achievements that you accomplished. And I know you're the first to say it, it wasn't just me, but you brought that department so, so far in the time you were there. Just look at the Yiwujiu Monument and the Vietnam Wall that Counselor Perry was heavily involved in and just so many things and the service that you gave to veterans. And the thing about you with that department, you're so well-connected with veterans. I've seen it firsthand. They rely on you, they trust you, and they have confidence in you. And again, I've seen it many times in terms, maybe you don't know it, but I watch your interaction a lot and I could see the huge heart that you have and happy, happy for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Make sure you ask him to tell you about the paperclip story one of these days when he was on the city council.
Oh, because I have a lot of stories, a lot of Corky Rose stories.
Counselor in seat five, Councilor Lee.
Thank you. I normally do not like all these kind of love fest, but I have to admit that I'm going to also... that I'm going to also have to add to this whole thing.
They make me blush.
Yeah. I, you know, the one thing that I'm always going to be in debt for you for and always grateful for was, one of my, one of my high school friends passed away. He was killed in Afghanistan. And he was, he was a sergeant first class Eric Emmon. And his father came to me when I was working at the vet center, and we wanted to do something, you know, just positive him and honor him. And you, you stepped up as good as, as good as I could ever ask for. We sat down in your office multiple times with multiple people, organized a great memorial for him at North Park. And again, I just say this, I'm always going to be in debt and just in gratitude for that, that whole effort, that whole time. I wasn't even on the council at that time. So, just really appreciate that. And I'll always, and anyone ever says anything to me about Ray Hague, I always, I always mention that. But my job here is to ask about some of these, some, some questions here. And it's really, it's really not any discrepancy. As I see the almost eleven thousand for the other personnel costs, I'm assuming it's the same role that it plays in, in all the other line items. But just for people to know, you have about one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred allotted for veteran medical bills. Is that something where you, your office has helped veterans pay some medical bills? What capacity?
Well, part of our process is we offer complete medical to our veterans that are on chapter one fifteen. And if they have their own, we also pay co-pays.
Okay.
So, they're on our Bedex and co-pay. So, that covers, that line item covers those expenses.
And, and just, and without going all through the numbers, but going down the line, you have hospital bills, veteran ambulance, funeral services, things like that. That, that's what most of these funds go towards as well, correct?
Yes. And those line items are all seventy-five percent reimbursed by the state. So, the city's commitment is twenty-five percent.
Okay, great. That's good to know as well.
We've had a great track record of getting things authorized. There's things you can spend and not get authorized. So, but we have a great track record of getting back our reimbursements.
It's one of the better offices that we have in City Hall. So, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
All right, I'm going to fall just shy of calling it a lovefest anymore, but an infatuation with the job that you do. I don't have a question. I'll keep it short. In the short tenure that I've been, had the honor of being on the council, we've had a couple of interactions. And the work that you do is second to none. I just want you to know that. I've called you, picked up the phone, and I've literally seen you do some miraculous things for some of the veterans in the city. And I just want to thank you and, like the other councils have said, congratulate you on your retirement. We greatly appreciate the work that you do. And I hope that man, a woman that takes your position knows that they have some humongous shoes to fill. So, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. I would certainly go back a long way. Be my plumber, electrician, whatever it may be. Eat at the Rockland Diner. When we had the nightclub, Chantilly Bar One used to be there too. A lot of good times up there. And also, it was in your wedding. So, we go back a long time. And, you know, when, when you ran the city council, you ran and you won. And you've done one hell of a job, I think. And you've also done a good job with the veterans. You're always there, always got a good speech for them. You worked on a wall, many memorials throughout the city of Fall River. I mean, you're the best. You're the best. A word of caution, though. I mean, you're going to retire. And before you go buy the bait and the worms, I know that's not your deal. You buy the bait, you go to the casino, maybe. Go to school and learn how to play blackjack. You know? Make sure you got it down, like, like the city council and the veterans. And maybe we go one day and we'll, I'll teach you how to play.
So, that means we'll be going fishing, like we have in the past, and we have some pretty good fish stories.
Absolutely.
Never caught a fish.
No. You're absolutely right. Got stopped a few times on our way back. But that's a story. So, good luck, and we'll see you around. And I'm sure we're going to have some more good times together.
Thanks, Leo.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
We should have had you come down at the beginning of the meeting. Counselor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
Mr. Hague, on the budget, when it talks about the restoration of monuments and the matching funds, and it went from thirteen and now it's a little bit lower, but I know there is a resolution in the ordinance committee to put all of the monuments under the VSO because not the grass cutting and all of that, the park department will handle that. But specifically, you and I have spoken about all of the monuments that we have, and some of them need special care in cleaning them because of whatever they're, they're made out of. I know at the wall, we need, you know, we can't just use anything on that. Is that going to be enough? If that ordinance passes, that you're going to handle that? Or would, would we have to transfer within your budget?
That line item will be depleted shortly, and that was a matching grant from the state. So, that's a carryover.
Okay.
But if you notice, we've changed the Pine Street Vet Center.
Yep, I saw that. And I thank you for that.
And the mayor wanted to add the park to it.
Right.
So, it's now both. It's the Veterans Pine Street Center slash Memorial Park.
And the Memorial Park.
So, we've done a great job in fixing that building up. I remember when we first started, I think it was the vice president who got moving on that, the building, the windows were broken, et cetera. So, now, we're into our fourth budget year. We've pretty much brought that building right up to first class. So, we're not going to need as much money in that building. So-
Right.
Have enough money for the, the monuments. We give two thousand dollars to the Iwo Jima, and now we're setting up to give some maintenance money to the Vietnam Wall. And that's going to be done through the War Council, the Veterans War Council.
Yeah, the War Council's managing that. But I'm just looking at all the other monuments in the, in the city that are all, you know, the veteran monuments that are throughout the city that you would have the availability to get more funding or matching funding or whatever funding to make sure that those are maintained, cleaned. How much does it cost to maintain, to clean, for example, the Iwo Jima monument?
At one time, it was costing about seven thousand. That has to be done every three years. But now, people have come forward and given better prices. So, I think we're down to about twenty-five hundred every two years. We think it's going to cost about five thousand dollars a year to clean and maintain the Vietnam Wall. The other monuments in the park are smaller, so I don't see them costing an awful lot of money. But this is a healthy budget. And that's one thing I can say. I mean, everybody is talking about the job we do in that office, but without the support of the councils that have given us the budgets to work with, they're very veteran-friendly in Fall River, the administrations have always given us a healthy budget. So, I would expect we would have monies and some of the line items to-
To be able to do that.
If we ran into a big problem, we would be able to handle it. So-
Just that if that passes an ordinance, I want to make sure that there was enough in here.
Yeah.
Again, like everybody said, thanks.
Then, once you pass the ordinance, you can always ask the mayor to send down an appropriation and-
Put it in.
And send it right in there. So-
But like everybody else has said, you know, you do a good job. I know that firsthand from all the work we do. And, you know, everybody's saying congratulation on your retirement. But I think, I'm going to see you around here.
Yes.
At least twenty hours a week.
And we're going to work on another committee together.
Because we've got to work on that Civil War monument.
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready. But-
Ready to go. Thank you.
At least you'll be able to go with Leo one day and then come with me and work the next. But thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Councilor Vice President.
I just have a point of information for Councilor in seat eight. The council secretary had sent me an updated list of items in ordinance. That's not in ordinance. I'm not sure where it is, but that's not in ordinance.
It was in ordinance.
Definitely not.
Do you know where it is?
Nobody knows where it is right now. So, we'll find out in, in the clerks. We'll get back to you tomorrow.
Hey, we'll put in another one.
It went somewhere. Maybe it went to the veterans committee. I'm not sure. But I just wanted to point that out. I know you keep saying it, but it's not in there. So, Madam Secretary-
Where did it go, parks or something? No.
We'll find out tomorrow. We're not going to have this conversation. We'll find out tomorrow. The clerk will get an email into what committees and-
Mr. Hague, thank you very much. I know you're, you're still going to be here, but we appreciate all you do. And you're certainly going to be a tough act to follow.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Hague? Thank you very much, Mr. Hague. We're going to turn to inspectional services, health, and library. Let's do inspectional services, Mr. Hathaway. That is going to be starting on page two-three-nine in your budget book, two-three-nine. Any questions for Mr. Hathaway? Counselor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
You said two-thirty-nine?
That's where community services begins.
So, inspectional services begins on two-fifty-three.
I was going to say, yeah.
Page two-fifty-three is where it begins in the budget book.
Okay.
My apologies.
The biggest change in, while Mr. Hathaway comes down, the biggest change in his department is the category called Other Purchased Services. We're converting a lot of our paper permits to online and electronic, and he's working with a company now to start to make those transitions. So, he'll say that that particular line item is increasing from fifty thousand to seventy thousand for that reason. And he's here now so he can answer whatever other particular positions.
Okay. I have-
A question you might have.
One of my questions would be, I noticed that you had, that there's two vacancies. I'm assuming the people left, went to another department. I don't know what.
So, you're referring to, one of the inspectors transferred and moved out to DCM?
Okay.
He works in the, he works for DCM in the sanitation end of things for citations for litter.
Glenn, if I may?
Yes.
One is seals and measures, and one is a clerk. The two vacancies in your budget.
She said that one had transferred.
Two, two vacancies.
Roger Kesey, right?
No, that was going to be on my next question.
Okay.
And one is a clerk.
That was going to be my next question. From, that, that person was in your budget in 2021. They're not in your budget in 2022.
Correct. That person transferred to another department.
Okay.
So, the other, the other two items is a clerk, which at some point in time, I'd love to replace. I lost that particular clerk due to the pay scale. So, everything that this council has talked about in the past two meetings that I've attended is mushrooming right through the building. And we can't keep help, or we can't buy help, so to speak, because of the pay scales. So, I really would like to replace that clerk at some point in time. Have not advertised it, done so because I don't believe we're going to find anybody for that pay rate.
Mr. Hathaway, and I don't mean to interrupt our counsel, Councilor Dion, but are you speaking of the senior clerk at thirty thousand four-three-four?
Yes.
Okay. And have you conducted interviews in the past? And you just can't fill it because of pay?
We have not advertised it, to be honest with you. We've, I've discussed it with Madeline a little bit.
Okay.
And, and quite honest with you, the reason that person left was because of the pay.
Right.
And we've just keep knocking that around.
Okay. Counselor Dion?
As far as the weights and measures in regards to that position, that individual recently retired. I have not replaced that individual yet. I have still reviewing it. I had a, an altered it. Going to come on board temporarily until we can make some final decisions on that department, so to speak. Unfortunately, that didn't work out. The individual that was going to do the replacements is informing that he's, he's ill. So, I'm still looking, the, the new individual that I was hoping to fill temporarily until we decided on how we were going to act with that department, the filling person, the temporary person, is very ill right now. So, we'll leave it at that. Please.
You're not catching any breaks?
No.
None at all. Oh, my goodness. Other personnel cost sixteen-four. Did we, did you discuss that already?
It's the same conversation that we've had. In this particular instance, if you look at your spreadsheet, one of the positions that has asked for in terms of an increase is, is a management position. And then, the remaining is the potential increase due to future negotiations for the ASME union.
Basically, I think that's all I have. So, and I'm glad to see, because when I looked, I looked at the 2021 budget, and I was, and I said, wait a minute, this person got lost. And I didn't know if somehow they just didn't get carried over. I didn't know what happened, but I was well aware that the person still worked for the city. So, I was just very confused on that. But, all right. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Councilor Lee.
Hi. Hi. So, you know, you're one of the people that I, that I, we've been interacting pretty much all year round on certain things, right? Down at the White, White, what was it? Whitefield. Whitefield Street and- Yes. And, and all in between is all kinds of different conversations that we've had about people trying to, trying to fight over swales in the back of their buildings and everything else. And there was another, there was another situation, though. However, it was a person that was, there was an accident that occurred. They had an electric fire, and they had to rebuild their shed. We had conversations about that one as well. And along the way, we, I kept asking, where would the individual get, you know, the codes to figure out what he can do, what he can and can't do, rather than just depending on constant phone calls and people coming, going back and forth and trying to find it? We never really, I never really got a chance to really get that. But I'm looking at the budget, and this is the reason why I'm bringing this up. I'm looking at the budget, and it says, it has a section here for dues, membership subscriptions. Not a lot of money. It's only about maybe four thousand dollars altogether. But it says zoning bulletins and code books. Is that something that a person would be able to look at if they're trying to get, you know, ahead of it, ahead of it before they start making all the phone calls?
No. So, that four thousand dollars is for licensed inspectors, such as plumbing, electrical, building, and any other inspector, maybe in minimum housing or sanitation, that needs certification or has books, or is required to have books.
And zoning bulletin too as well?
Yep, that's part of it.
All right. Now, if a, you know, a person does have a project that they have to put together in their homes, are they just dependent on calling for the inspector? They don't have any other kind of guidance or any kind of code books to look at in order to-
This is true. The code books are very expensive, counselor. The average person is not, they're not open, so to speak, to the average person. However, you can go on the internet and search.
Is there, is there a government website to look at?
Oh, yes.
All right.
Yes. And you can search it. It's complicated. They're complicated for us, never mind the everyday public.
Because this is where you get your information from, when you go to a building.
Yes. Their, their regular building code books. We have several categories of books. So, you have a one and two family. You have a commercial book, which is the IVC, International Building Code.
I mean, people get stuck sometimes. They get stuck spending-
It gets too complicated to give it to the public or have, or even ask them to, what I think I would like to answer for you is that, and it was brought up earlier, our website needs updating for the department.
Yeah.
And that'll answer your question.
So, you're saying that, you're saying that the updated website that, that's someday that we have-
Someday.
Is going to have this complicated code system on here?
Going to have a better interaction with the public in the everyday questions that you're trying to get answered, such as a shed, such as a pool, such as some of the interactions that a lot of people ask about fencing and so on and so forth. The website needs to be updated. To be quite honest with you, I don't have the time. That's, that's the bottom line. I don't have the time. If-
You're going to show me this complicated website that one day.
This city is booming, this city is booming right now. And the biggest boom we have is Durfee, and I spend more time there than, than I do. So, I set my priorities. Someday, the boom will slow down a little bit, and I'll be able to focus on some of the things like the website.
Thousands and thousands of dollars people spend and going back and forth sometimes. And they, they, you know, I think it's a, it's a, it's a high frustrate, it's a highly frustrating situation, I'm sure, you know?
Well, anybody is open to call and, and get their questions answered, and we will visit their site. Okay? And there is people every day that don't like what we tell them.
I know that.
And we're the bad news. And it is, that's my job, to sometimes give bad news.
All right, before I, before you, you're going to show me that website, right?
Someday, I will show you a good website.
I'll be, I'll be there. Thank you. I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Ms. Sahadi on page two-fifty-three under other personnel costs. Same conversation we had before. So, this has sixteen-four. But when I look on the salary change paper, we had before, so this has 16-4, but when I look on the salary change paper, well, the only thing I see in our inspectional services is 3,123, and the not included item, unless...
And then if you, if you look over into the next column, because this particular department has, I believe, 18 employees, you have 13,271 calculated to be an anticipated increase in those salaries based on the current negotiations that we've spoken about this morning, today, this evening.
Okay.
So the sum of the two is the 16-4.
And that says, 3123 says promised Joe Bisco's salary? What is, I'm not sure what that means.
So again, this was internal notes for the mayor, but Mr. Hathaway, when he was hired, was promised the salary of the previous director, and he was not provided that particular salary, and he has asked during his budget meetings to bring his salary up to what the previous director of inspectional services or building director, depending on how you wanna look
So, so the previous director of inspectional services, because I know we did some reorganization in the last administration, did they have this entire department as it is now?
Yes.
They did?
Yes. As far as I know, yes.
Yes, okay. Was it the previous administration that made that promise?
I believe so.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so it's half of the questions that I have, thank you.
Thank you, I don't think any other council wants to speak on this item, but I just wanna say, I've said this before, since I've been on the council for a bit now, that I, I think that this specific department isn't funded enough. I've said it for a while, I'm not the mayor, but I think that Inspection Services does a tremendous amount of work that isn't a necessary nine-to-five job. I see Mr. Hathaway at Durfee High School at 11 o'clock in the morning on Saturdays, he's running to deal with complaints that people have all across the city at all different hours of the day, called by police and fire departments at 3 o'clock in the morning to go shut off and condemn a property. It's not an easy job, and I personally have maintained the position, especially with the amount of vacant properties that we have in this city, that there needs to be more funding for his revolving fund, more than $15,000, I think, for him to be able to adequately trash out properties, clean properties out, cut grass, and that kind of stuff. And I, I find it concerning to me that the department, I don't wanna necessarily say is neglected, but is true zero-based budget, like, his department, there's, there's, I don't see much, much fat in the way of anything, it's slim to none. And I, I, I wanna urge that this, this administration work with Mr. Hathaway and find out what his true needs are. I mean, I, I can just tell you from my experience in the real estate industry, that in order to trash a property up and board it with the cost of lumber right now that he has to spend and pay for these contractors, it is absolutely crazy that we only give him $15,000 to work with on a revolving fund on a yearly basis. Mrs. Sahadi, you know this is a news to you, I've maintained this position for years within this department, even vacant property registration fees, his office is required to be the police of vacant property registration fees, and it doesn't go back into his department, it goes right through the general fund, correct?
It's, it's a local receipt, that's correct.
So it goes through the general fund, right, through our local receipts? So, I mean, maybe his department, and this is just an idea, maybe his department would be further incentivized, and him as a department head would be further incentivized if we can maybe take a portion of that vacant property registration fee, and he would be much more, not necessarily saying you're not attentive, Mr. Hathaway, but there'd be a little bit more of an incentive to see that that revolving fund be used a little bit better. And I understand that we need to generate revenue, and I get all that, it's just, I, I feel that this department has been, for years, neglected, it needs more resources, Mr. Hathaway needs me more resources, and I'm, I'm hoping that in future years, or maybe even this year, that we look a little closer at that department, because I don't feel convinced, as Mr. Hathaway's here, that he has enough resources to run his department. Just my only opinion. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Appellatiar.
Thank you. The biggest complaint I got with your department is you get the phone calls, "Oh, I've been waiting a week for the building inspector or the electrical inspector." It all comes down to you don't have the staff to do it, and you need more money. That revolving fund, how much money have you got in that fund?
Fifteen, I get appropriation of $15,000.
Yeah, what do you got in it?
Probably 10 cents right now.
Well, see, I, the houses we knocked down, we're supposed to sell it, go back into rev, yeah, revolving fund, so you're not getting that money.
Yes, I am, so.
So where's the money?
So, the, this, they're asking two questions there, so the, the houses that was recently torn down, those funds come through community development, Mike Dion's office, for two buildings, the third building come out of my budget. What Counselor Pont is referring to and helps out is that we have, and you're part of it, you, you, you complain about, bring complaints in regards to neighbors complaining about blighted property, we go out and maintain it. We don't get that money back until we lean, the house is sold, okay? Sometimes we have, right now, we're at the lowest level we've ever been in years, and I hate to say this publicly because I don't want it to change, but we're, we're down to about 70-some houses, and those are at a stale amount, but those are the ones where the money is, and we won't get it out, I probably will never see that money back, because once we acquire the property, and it goes up for auction or anything like that, the value is not there to get that money back. So that's when I lose it, and the account doesn't get replenished, so that's where it hurts. But otherwise, my, anything I do on property, I put a lien on it, and I will get reimbursed, or the city will get reimbursed someday. But if it goes up to auction, and it's like Counselor Pont is referring to, is that if, if it's a small lot, and we give it away to a neighbor for a butters program or something to that effect, I don't, we don't see the money, we don't see it back. Water, sewer, I'll give you a perfect example, because it was, I raised havoc over it. Several years ago, when Joe Bisco was here, he tore a house down on Bay Street near the water department, the water department ended up purchasing the property. The building department spent $68,000 tearing down the building and couldn't recoup a penny, because the money that they got in the purchase went to the buyer, the seller, and then the remainder that was left went to the city collector.
Right.
So the building department didn't matter. I lost 68, we, the building department lost $68,000 on that transaction. The property did go to the city, I agree, but the building department didn't get reimbursed anything.
And they, the building department always matters, but unfortunately, the taxes come off first, then the water and sewer, and then the demos.
That's right, that's right.
So, the building department is a very important department, but unfortunately, they are the last to collect, when there's a short sale and we're talking about a little money in the sale.
So I do get my money back eventually, but not always.
When Bisco was around?
Yes.
I remember we were given maybe $150,000 for that purpose.
I think, I think back then it was downgraded a little bit because of the tough times we're experiencing, economy-wise, it was downgraded, and we just never put it back up.
So just 15 grand, that's it, you can't do much with that.
Yeah, we try.
Cut a tree down, that's it.
I do clean some yards, Counselor.
Well, you got my vote, you need more money.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Pereira, before you speak, we, it's about 9:15, can we run till 9:30 tonight? Is that good? Okay, Counselor in seat eight.
So I'm really surprised the water department got the land. The water department got the land, all they're after, they're gonna own Fort River pretty soon, they keep getting land. But one of the things I wanted to ask you is, and I had written it down, some notes when I was doing stuff, but our inspectional fees, you have all these out-of-town people coming in, building things all over the place, our fees are one of the lowest around.
Correct, guaranteed, we are the lowest of the, and, and contractors will tell us that all the time, but yet they're the first ones to complain when you give them the price for a new house, okay? And they know it, because if they are building in other communities. However, to be quite frank with you, the economy is so good in this community, I don't have the time to put the time in to raising, and coming before this council to raising the fees as of yet, and that's my honest opinion. I mean, I have to set my priorities, right now my priorities are inspectional portions of my job for some of these major projects that's going on in the city, one of them being Durfee.
So is that something, Ms. Sahadi, that someone else could do, to look at what our fees are here, and what they are in comparison to neighboring communities?
The building department has put together a binder, I think I actually left it on all of your desks a long time ago.
We, we did do it.
So it now needs to be updated.
We did do it, we started it.
Yes.
But it, it's, the problem lies is that when we get here, we wanna have the answers for the council, so it was never completed fully, and then the boom hit, and we've been there ever since.
Can you imagine if we had that and the boom hit, what we'd have? I mean, Brendan's so good down there.
Counselor, I, I agree 100%.
Yeah.
But, believe it or not, the people that wanna put in a pool, the people that wanna put in a shed?
They want it right away, they want you to be there.
Constantly complaining, I pay enough in taxes, so, you know, it's, one is, one is, it's a balancing, and with the economy so good, I haven't, I didn't wanna do it to change anything around, let's keep it going. We're busy, city's getting the benefits from it, we're getting revitalized all over the place, and we start changing fees at this moment in time, yeah, it'd be good for the city side, but it may discourage people from rehabbing some of these big buildings.
Well, I just think that a lot of people that are coming into the city purchasing things are coming in from out of town, purchasing things, and I would defer to people that are in real estate to look at that, but the calls I've gotten on my real estate, they call you, you know, seven times a day, "Are your property for sale, your property?" No.
I agree with you 100%.
And it's a lot of people coming in from out of town.
Yes.
So it's not that we're, you know, affecting a lot of our residents, but, but others. But I agree with Counsel Appellati, if you need more money to do the job that you need to do, we complain about, you know, blighted properties and things being dirty and this and that, and I will give Faust Fiore lots of credit, I mean, he's out there.
Absolutely.
All the time, doing a phenomenal job, but I know that he wants to change some things, as we've talked about, a couple of issues that, that he wants to change, and he thinks would be beneficial and help him as he's going around trying to resolve some of these problems. And, and if we need more money to do it, then we need to come up with the money to do it, because in the long run, our residents are gonna live in a cleaner, healthier community. Nobody wants to live near a property that's blighted on the side of them, and even the nuisance ordinance, and people don't call the police to complain, we can't build a case to, to state that something is a nuisance ordinance, and I don't think that people understand that, so.
At some point in time, we'll be back before the council for some upgrades in the ordinances.
Right.
Such as nuisance, we have a few properties right now that are a nuisance.
Yeah.
We, we have a few things we need to upgrade, one of them being the ordinance for commercial property and being blighted, okay? There's no mechanism, but we're dealing with it.
I know, it raises me, and I know that's not this administration, but if a prior administration made a promise in good faith to an employee, and especially at such a small amount, for a director of a part, of a department that we all agree works, you know, works around the clock, I mean, I know myself, I call you, you still answer all my calls, and ask all kinds of questions that residents ask about nuisance properties and fire escapes and everything under the sun, and you always know exactly what building I'm talking about, or have a, an example of another building where it's happened, and this department is always, you know, run on a, on a shoestring budget, but specific to somebody making a promise, even though that person is a little longer here, you know, those are the kinds of things that if other people in the administration know about it, then those are the kind of things that I think should move over into the other column and.
Well, they are, and again, don't look at the top of those two columns, because each column has been included in the budget, so the question is, is if it's the will of this council to pass the budget with the other personnel costs included in the salaries and wages, and it's the will of the mayor then to provide Mr. Hathaway with an increase in his salary, he will have the ability to do that, because you have now passed the budget with sufficient funding.
Okay, and now, my question is, will you have to pass it with all of the other personnel costs?
Again, you're, you have the opportunity to approve the budget as it's presented, not approve it, or reduce it.
All right, all right, I appreciate that, thank you, and don't forget the sign behind, you know, which one I'm talking about, right?
Yes.
Because it's outdoor movie season now, and you're gonna owe her a food truck.
I've, I've looked at it twice, Counselor.
Thank you.
If you feel so inclined to do so, Mr. Hathaway, is to get over to Mrs. Sahadi some of the necessary needs that maybe you've asked for in previous years, and the city council may or may not be able to take that up. I mean, we need the budget from that, we can't increase, but we can reduce. I don't think we wanna reduce your department, but I, I gather that there's support to get you some additional resources if you can convince the mayor to amend the budget, and I think that's the voice of this body at this point. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, while I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everybody, and I'm thinking, and, and I know we're not on the subject of revenues, but the only thing that goes through my mind is billboards, billboards, billboards. At $50,000 a billboard, how much could we help his department? How much could we help another department? The one department needs another worker, he, he should have, be compensated better, his revolving fund should be higher, four billboards is $200,000 that we can infuse into this budget. And those are the things that drive me crazy, is that we have the ability, but yet we won't do it, and then we always say, we need more, we need more, and then say, but we don't have it. We need to take some type of action, we need to do something to bolster our needs. And the only other comment I'd like to make about Mr. Hathaway is, he probably very often is screaming on the inside, but you never see it on the outside.
Thank you.
And, and, and you do do a phenomenal job, and you're bothered by a lot of people.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway, appreciate it, thank you for your time tonight. You are able to go.
Thank you, Counselor.
Library, any questions for the library?
I don't have any questions at the library.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Just one, they have five funded positions, and they're all vacant. There's five vacancies that are funded, is that a better way of putting it? Let's see, page 276.
Yep, certainly, certainly, Counselor, so, you know, we've had, we've had a little bit of change, if you will, in the library with the pandemic year, to start with, we, we certainly had the South End Library closed, that was closed mid-year, so that created some of the vacancy, vacant positions. We are working, the library trustees or commissioners, I'm not sure if they're called trustees or commissioners, are working closely with the administration now, attempting to have a bookmobile purchased, so you'll see that two of these vacant positions are actually for bus drivers, because we're hopeful that we're gonna need, obviously, bus drivers if we're able to get the bookmobile. We haven't had the bookmobile approved yet, we have included it on the correspondence from the mayor to the school committee, attempting to see whether it would be an eligible expense within the Ursa funding that they've received. We did check with the CARES money, unfortunately, it is not a CARES-related expenditure, or we may have actually taken care of this ourselves quite some months ago, because we've been talking about this for, for quite some time, and at this particular point, we're really looking to see, and I know Leanne has had a number of conversations with the mayor in terms of the structure, but as you know, the library's been somewhat closed, curbside delivery, I mean, now that the emergency will be lifted, I think there'll be a better opportunity to look at these positions and have some, you know, further conversations with the mayor, as well as with Mrs. Coelho, to, you know, advertise those that are necessary, and again, hopefully, hopefully we can, I, I speak to one of the board members on a regular basis, because he's my neighbor, and he repeatedly reminds me that he doesn't have the bookmobile yet, so.
So, can I ask you a question? Because you said that ARPA won't allow you to. Because you said that ARPA won't allow you to fund that.
Nope, I said, I'm sorry, just, I said CARES.
Oh, you said CARES.
CARES, the 7.9 million.
Can we use ARPA funding for that?
We are looking into that to be a possibility. But, you know, under the circumstances that the Ursa money, the early education, and it's sort of education-related in the sense of it being a bookmobile, the first stop that we made, so to speak, was with the school committee to see whether or not the education money would be available for this particular item. As you know, the requirements for the ARPA money are still coming down in drips and drabs. And until just recently, what, a week or so ago, we didn't even have the funding. So that may be the alternative at this point. We may end up looking at whether that is eligible under those funds and move forward. It certainly would be in a couple of small areas that we could certainly do it with ARPA money.
Yeah. Because, I mean, the reason I ask is, you know, number three, to address negative economic impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic. And then you go up to number nine, a program, service, or other assistance that is provided in a qualified census tract. And then it gives different examples. And then one of the things, the type of program would be new or expanded early learning services and educational and evidence-based services to address the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students. I would certainly think that.
I think it would be a great argument.
Would fall into that category.
Exactly.
So that's why I was questioning whether the ARPA funding could actually be utilized for that and that we could bring it to fruition.
Right. So again, as you know, the mayor put together a panel. Both Mr. McCoy and I are on the panel. We met for the first time. Each individual, you know, has certainly different concerns with regard to what we should be utilizing this money for. But that would be a perfect use because that would be, you know, a one-time expense for one-time money. Now, of course, we would then have to fund the library's budget with the operating expenses. But, you know, we're talking about insurance and maintenance on this bookmobile as opposed to anything significant. And again, we're looking at maybe two part-time bus drivers that would then not be eligible for benefits because they were part-time. And so we wouldn't have the additional cost of insurance and retirement.
Yeah. I think that that would, it's definitely worth looking at for sure. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. It is approaching 9:30. We have, I know, there's a couple councils who want to speak. My question is, do we want to let our Board of Health Department head go and resume her tomorrow? Because there are three councilors who still would like to speak on the library. What is the will?
I personally have no questions for.
Is there people who have questions for Board of Health?
Yeah, let her come down.
I think Mrs. Sahadi could answer mine, but I wouldn't want her to have to come back again.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I don't go anywhere. We still have questions for you. I just, I don't want her to sit here if we're going to, if we have, you know, another few minutes of debate on library. So what is the will? Do we want her to stay?
I think she should be released and Ms. Sahadi can answer the questions if she has.
I think she's done a phenomenal job through COVID.
She has.
And helped a lot. I don't have any questions for Board of Health.
Does anybody have questions for Board of Health? I don't want.
I'm happy to say I have child, I don't have child care tomorrow. So if you guys could.
Okay. We'll hang tight then. Counselor in seat one, Consulor Kadim. Thank you.
Thank you. Just looking at the salaries, so this might just be a typo over on the salary wages permanent. So it says 18 full-time employees. So last year, just looking at total employees, it was 17.5. This year is 18.5. So it looks like there's several, there's about two and a half FTEs that are just part-time.
It should be, yes. We closed the South Branch, so that was the two full-timers that we lost. That would have been 16 full-timers. So I do have one full-time vacancy right now. And I know on the budget, it shows five vacancies, but two of them have been filled. Two are the potential bus drivers and one is a full-timer that's vacant. So I have three vacancies right now.
Okay. So have we met the municipal appropriation requirement? And I guess what's that number?
I have met the MAR, which is 12% of the budget for material expenditure. We will meet that this year.
Okay. And then you've total, so you've got the material requirement, which is the 12%, but the MAR, which is the last three years, the average of the last three years, multiplied by two and a half.
In probably about 13 years, we've been getting a waiver. And last year, the state initiated a five-year plan. We have five years to step up. If we do not step up, then we will not get our state aid.
Okay.
But as you can see in the budget, we do have a new line called retirement is going to be put into our budget. And that will make us, that'll be the first time in many, many years that we meet the MAR.
Okay. So you're saying you're meeting it this year or?
In this budget because the retirement line has been added, which is almost 400,000.
399,800.
That's why my budget looks like it's a huge increase. The retirement fund has always come out of the city's retirement department instead. So now we will finally make the MAR. And two years ago, we added the health insurance, which normally the health cost was not in my budget. It was in the health and human services. So that helped bring us closer to it, but we didn't make them off.
Okay. So that was my next line of question was the health insurance and the retirement. So that's just a transfer from retirement and health insurance account?
Correct.
To this so that it could count towards the MAR? Okay.
Exactly. It's, quite frankly, it's very similar to the custodial services. It was always been under Mr. Gallagher's department. But in order to include all of the costs of this department, we've now been including custodial. We included health insurance. And after some discussion with some of my peers in the industry, retirement has been, an area that has been utilized to make sure that the library is meeting its requirement.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat seven, Consulor Pelletier.
I got seven questions for you. It's getting late, so I'm going to ask you one question. All right? You ready?
I'm ready.
Is the roof still leaking?
No, it isn't.
It's all set?
Yeah. The roof is not leaking. It was the seam around the roof that needs to be repointed because one of the walls on the side of the building has caused some damage. But it is in the process of being fixed.
Oh, it's not fixed yet?
Not completely.
Wow. All right. You better get on it. That's all. I yield. Thank you.
Constancy five, Consulor Lee.
How many closed down libraries do we have?
Well, this year, we closed the South End. But I don't know how many years ago Flint was closed.
In 2015, the East End Branch was closed. And then this past December, we closed the South Branch. So now we are a standard-only main library.
So those two properties that closed down, is that something that you rent the property out? Or does it go back to the?
It was on our property. It wasn't our property.
Okay. So it's just back and that's it? We were sort of renting it ourselves?
If you look in the budget, you'll see that we were budgeting $30,000 for the rental on South End.
I see.
And it's now zero.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. No further questions for the library. Thank you so much. Last person for this evening, Health and Human Services. While she comes down, I want to echo the sentiments of our colleague in seat eight. Unfortunately for all of us, we've had to deal with COVID-19 over the last year and a half, year plus. And her work was yeoman's work in her ability to keep this council updated, keep the mayor's office updated, keep the community updated, all while, I believe, having a family and having a baby as well. So your work has been tremendous. I want you to be acknowledged. Thank you for all that you've done and continue to do in your very, very challenging department. I bet when you were hired here, you would never thought you had to deal with a pandemic. But your work with the clerk's office and council leadership to make sure the councilors were safe and the people here that would come are safe is very much appreciated. So I want you to know that. Questions?
So just as an overview, just quickly, this department is broken down into a number of areas. So you're going to see health administration, preventative care, counseling on aging, et cetera. Ms. Curran is responsible for all of those. The two couple of areas, just to bring to your attention, under health administration, it appears that the salary is decreasing. That is because one of the individuals that was in this particular department moved over to CDA and is now being funded by CDA. So that's where you're seeing the decrease. Again, as we discussed earlier this evening, a lot of these vacant positions are bringing, are being brought back. Some of them were laid off. The majority of those that are laid off are coming back. We do have one particular position, and this goes back to what we've talked about at length tonight and then other nights. The health administration department is losing the head clerk. That particular individual bid for a position within city government that pays a little bit higher. And I think the only other thing maybe to talk about is a couple of the stipends out of the BCTC grant as well as the Shannon Grant were increased slightly this year. And counseling on aging, again, same situation. You've got a lot of vacancies here, but some of these people have been brought back as of last Thursday.
They all started on Monday.
Monday.
The 7th. And all folks for the COA are returning, but two.
Ms. Curran, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't really have any, anything else.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor in seat three, Consulor Kilby.
Just a quick comment. Sorry for topic. You look exactly, you could be my daughter's twin. But thank you for all the people that you got vaccinated.
Yes.
And the great, like Council President said, all the great work that you've done over the past couple of years.
We still have a lot of work to do.
I'm amazed how, I'm going to bring my daughter, picture my daughter to show you. Thank you.
In terms of.
She's younger than me.
In terms of vaccinations, while we have you here, I mean, how are we doing as a community on the vaccination front?
So as of last week, which was the last, the last time we had the data pulled from the state, we had 40.9% of the community vaccinated. So that's 36,574 residents fully vaccinated. Just over 6,000 are partially vaccinated. But that's lower than the state average of 55.9%. So we do have, you know, a significant amount of work to do in the community in terms of getting more individuals vaccinated and, you know, reaching a more comfortable percentage of about 70-plus percent to have herd immunity in the community. And as of yesterday, we had 14,263 total cases of COVID since January of last year and 367 deaths related to COVID.
Thank you. And Constancy eight?
I think tomorrow, they're giving vaccines at St. Mary's?
Yes, on Second Street.
Parking lot, St. Mary's Cathedral?
Yeah, we have a, we have a number. I think Seven Hills is doing that clinic. So we have a, you know, a variety of people in terms of the city offering vaccine. Star, Seven Hills, South Coast Hospital Group. So if people are looking for that clinic, I'm just going to plug the frvax.com website that has a listing of all of the local clinics that people can take advantage of. And they can search by vaccine type. So if parents are looking for a vaccine clinic.
Certain type, yeah.
Yeah, their child.
Yeah, I heard today they were doing it at St. Mary's too.
Yeah.
My whole family's vaccinated, kids, everything, we're all done.
Good.
Yep. I didn't want you to call me and say, did you get vaccinated? I did.
Good.
Honored to be able to tell you that. But thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions. Before we adjourn, I just want to make a quick couple of updates to the council. There's department heads who weren't able to make it because of our cutoff time here tonight. I sent them home. We're going to try our best tomorrow to try to get the department heads out before we ask questions, you know, about the mayor's office and the city clerk's office. They were all here for us. So I'm going to try my best to get them out. They work all day. And for them to be here till 9:30, 10 o'clock at night is obviously challenging for them. So with that being said, the other thing is the governor has lifted the emergency order in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This council has adopted a policy for citizens' input. Whereas before 3 o'clock in the afternoon, or we really didn't adopt it, it was just done so that people could still speak at citizens' input. What is the will of this council to continue that at this point? The citizens' input being submitted electronically? Or do you want to move away from that specific policy? Constancy eight?
My thoughts are that since we're moving away from that and the council chambers is open to the public, that the public should come. Obviously, if someone is handicapped and unable to be here.
That's correct.
Then I think we should have it. But one of the things that concerns me is that some of the citizen input letters that we're receiving are naming people in other elected officials, other elected officials or other people who aren't here to defend themselves. And I think that that needs to stop. If it's something that this council has purview over, then certainly I don't want to stifle anybody's freedom of speech. But if they're going to use this, you know, to say whatever they want when it's nothing that we can do, then maybe we need to have a conversation with the school department side and see what they're doing with citizen input. Because some of these letters should be going there. I don't think that it's appropriate to be able to let someone speak negatively about someone who's not present to defend themselves. Just my thought. With that, I yield.
The question is, does the city council want to continue to take input electronically? I mean, what we can do, since we've already established our agenda criteria, is if you want to start in July, we can do it just because we've done it. I think it's only fair at this point that we continue to allow the written communication as long as it's in the city council secretary's email by 3 o'clock the day of the meeting. And then maybe come July, we could look to get rid of that, which will allow more people to get vaccinated as well. Consulor Lee?
So I'm going to speak because I have the floor. I wanted to, I just wanted to say, I just haven't been talking over me. I just wanted to say that, Ms. Bouchard, I've appreciated for the past year and a half, your narrative voice. It's been great. But I'm ready to lift it. I'm ready to lift it now, today, and bring the people back to the floor and do citizen input. That's just me. That's my opinion.
Motion, is that a motion?
I make that motion.
I would second that.
Motion made by Consulor Lee to lift collecting citizens' input electronically, made by Consulor Lee, seconded by Consulor Peckham. Constancy four, discussion.
So that means nobody would be able to submit electronically anymore?
Unless they're handicapped and follow that handicap criteria.
And what was the other thing you said to keep it as it is through the end of the budget?
That was just offering a candid suggestion. Just because there are some people who may want to still speak.
I agree.
And if they can bring them here, they can bring them here. But the motion's been made, it's seconded, and we'll see what the will of the council is. You yield?
I yield.
Constancy two, Consulor Deon.
So my question is, just for clarification. So your proposal is people can do it in person or electronically?
Till July 1.
Till July.
Yeah.
Give people a chance to ease into it.
That's my suggestion.
That's your suggestion. The motion is to just say no more electronic as of right now.